Welcome. Welcome to the joint first call meeting, the Board of Mayor and Alvin and the Tallahassee Regional Planning Commission, Monday, September the 19th, 2022. The planning commission is now called to order.
We all called order and we're all here tonight.
Tonight, we do have a special call meeting and it's this time I'll, I'll read the call. Tallahassee Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Mayor and Alvin of the City of Tallahassee, Tennessee will meet together at 6:00 PM in the auditorium of Tallahassee High School, 927 North Jackson Street on Monday, September the 19th, 2022. The purpose of the joint meeting is to review the draft of the Think Tallahassee 2040 Comprehensive Plan. A presentation will be given by project consultants. And this is an open, public meeting and public comments will be taken at this meeting. The meeting will is being recorded and broadcast live on PUA Latu Channel 6. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Howard Smith to do the invocation and continue with the pledge to the flag. Reverend Smith, please stand.
Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on this day here in Tallahassee. Forgive us our trespasses. We forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Be with this joint meeting tonight. May your Holy Spirit lead, guide, and direct each one. We all want the best for Tallahassee and be with the mayor as he leads this meeting. Keep an end upon him. Give him strength, we do pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, hence one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Smith. This time I'll ask the recorder to do the roll call for the Board of Mayor and Alvin.
Mayor Proten Mathis. Barry. Dunn. Lick. Wilson. Before you guys see, don't lock on.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Need a roll call? No. We're all, we're all here.
Okay. All friends. At this time, we, we start the meeting tonight with some special presentations and we're going to start with the introduction that's going to come from our planning director to be followed by our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everyone in the audience. I'm Jennifer Moody, the city administrator, and we have Mary Samaniego, our planning director with us tonight. I just wanted to review the format of tonight's meeting. You may have participated in some of our open house sessions in August. We received a lot of comments and feedback about 140 written comments during those sessions. Tonight, we've asked our project consultants to return to Tallahassee and to give us a brief presentation on some of the common themes that we heard during those open house sessions. Then we're going to move into town hall style question and answer period. And I just want to remind everyone, the microphones do work better if you'll speak as directly as possible into them. And we apologize for the echo effect that's happening with the delay on the speakers, but just do your best to speak loudly, clearly, and maybe better than I am at controlling your pace. If you go a little bit slower, it's easier to be understood. Following the public comments, I believe that the chairman will lead the two boards in some open discussion and then at the very end of the night, we'll close with a timeline and a summary of next steps for, for adoption of the plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Samaniego?
Thank you, I'll be brief. Again, Mary Samaniego, planning director. I'm happy to see the turnout tonight. I think it's a good opportunity to hear everybody's comments, questions, and concerns. I'm happy that the consultants have agreed to return to Tallahassee to follow up with some of the issues that we've heard and I'm ready to get started.
Thank you. We do have this dealing our project consultants with the Walker Collaborative and this time I'll introduce Mr. Philip Walker with Walker Collaborative.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to really speak slowly because normally I speak like an auctioneer, but I'll, I'll try to focus. So as a creature of habit, every morning I start the day by reading the Tennessee. Not the whole thing. I usually keep it to 15 or so minutes, but I read a quote that made me think of Tallahassee. And here it is. The quote was, "You want to be somewhere where people care, where, where they're passionate, where it matters. It matters here." Now that happened to be the UT football coach, Josh Heiple, talking about the fan base, but it could have been the mayor talking about Tallahassee. Because I'll tell you, when we do plans like this, a lot of places are pretty apathetic and just by looking out at the audience, it's clear that you don't have apathy here. So that's a good thing. That's a healthy thing. I want to say just a few things to set the stage before we kind of go into the presentation. And I want to remind you that it's really normal when you do a plan like ours to have citizens who may not like every part of it and they voice their opinions and that's a good thing. That's how you get to a better plan. But when we do a plan, you know, we don't feel a need to fiercely defend every aspect of it or to debate about the plan. That's, that's not part of our job. When we're hired for projects like this, we do our research, we get public input, we put the plan document together, we present it, we hear what people have to say about it, and then the client can ask us to make revisions, in this case, the city. So, you know, it's, it's a pretty straightforward process. So tonight with us being here, there are two reasons we're here. Number one is to explain the thinking behind some of the ideas and there's some specific ideas that the city's flagged for us to address. And then the other thing is to simply answer questions. So, you know, with that said, I'm hoping it can be an informative and positive discussion that we have tonight with a bit of an echo. All right. So if you want to go to the first one. So these are the three issues we're going to talk about. I'm going to start off a little bit about the housing market demand. Now, we have an economist on our team. He's not here. He's the one that did the housing market analysis, but I'm going to try to be the economist for the night and just kind of summarize that because it, it has a lot of impact on the TNN, traditional neighborhood new place type. And then Keith's also going to talk about the downtown public space because I know there are concerns that have been raised about that. And then finally, Liesel's going to talk about mobility, you know, which is everything from motorized vehicle traffic to, to greenways and bike trails and so forth. So that's what we'll talk about if you go to the next slide. Okay, on housing, let me just talk about some of the factors that impact the housing market. So first of all, you've got a pretty tight supply of housing. There have been roughly 60 single family units permitted annually over the last several years. There's, there have been only two multifamily units permitted annually. That's the average. And when I say two units, I'm not talking two apartment buildings, two units, as in an apartment or a condo unit. So the supply is up 7% since 2010. Now, on the demand side, households are up 14% since that same period. So obviously you don't have enough housing. There's been a pandemic effect where you get, you know, people relocating to the area. You've got first time buyers, you got baby boomers, and I'm having a little trouble seeing the bottom of the slide, but, and rents are going up across the board at all price points. If you go to the next slide. So I'm going to talk about for sale housing and then talk about rental housing, okay? When it comes to for sale housing, our economists determine that there's market demand by 2026 for somewhere between 240 and 520 units. Of those roughly 290 would be market rate versus workforce. Workforce, by the way, equates to people who earn below 80% of the median annual household income or extremely low income. So that's, so that category would be between 80 and 120 units that there's market demand for. It also goes across all sorts of price ranges and you can see the breakout for $100,000 range, $200,000, $300,000. Now, the market unfortunately seems to be supplying $350,000 homes and, and up, but there's a lack of supply in, you know, 300,000 or even lower. Next slide. Now, that was, that was the for purchase. What about the rental demand? So we determined that there's demand by 2026 for somewhere between 220 and 400 units. Of those, about 200 would be market rate and about 200 would be workforce or, or extremely low income. And it demands for like all price ranges. And right now, the market is not supplying workforce or even market rate housing. So who is the market? You know, who are these, these folks? Well, you have local graduates and move ups, relocation, change, singles and change of life, change of life, meaning that, you know, you either got married or you got divorced or, you know, the household structure is kind of changing. And I think there's empty nesters and I can't remember everything except service and service workers. And think about that. That includes people like teachers who teach in the school or police officers. So that's kind of who the market is. Next slide. And this is you, Keith.
Now my turn. Oh, boy. Okay. So in order to frame this discussion, I think it's important to, to talk about how traditional neighborhoods are different from conventional subdivisions. So the diagram that you see is a really a great tool at, at illustrating this. So think of that collector road, if you can see it running from left to right. And south of that road is a conventional sprawl pattern of development. And there's a mix of, of uses, but they're all separated. And the streets are designed primarily for cars and almost all the trips require a car, which obviously increases traffic, but it also requires more parking. And open space is often what is left over. That is the way we have been building communities since the automobile became the dominant mode of transportation. Next slide. So this is just an aerial image. This is not from Tallahassee, obviously, but it's showing you what conventional sprawl kind of looks like. You've got a subdivision on the south. You've got this large road that separates the subdivision from a shopping center and then there's a mall. And so all of these separated uses force the use of the car. Next slide. So if we look at the diagram north of that collector road, there's a different pattern of development. First, you have the same mixture of uses, school, home, work, and shop, but they're all interconnected with blocks. And because they're interconnected, the streets disperse traffic and you capture internal trips. And then when you have more connectivity, those streets can be designed for not only cars, but also pedestrians, cyclists, and even transit. And then the other thing that you'll notice is that in certain spaces, this open space is a feature of the development. Buildings front that open space and they are as important in the grand pattern of development. So it's important to know that the name, traditional neighborhood development, comes from the fact that this pattern of development is inspired by the way that we built communities for thousands of years. That's the important thing to think about. So it's not really new, other than the fact that we have to accommodate the automobile, but we can do that while also accommodating other uses. Next slide. So these are some images to illustrate a traditional neighborhood development and its range of building types. So you have a square in the bottom left with some mixed use and residential. You have some attached housing. You even might have some small multifamily development and even single family, single family detached houses and large estate homes. These are from three different communities, these images. Next slide. So this region, well, first, there are traditional neighborhood developments across the country and lots of them in the southeast. But in this region, we have a few that I just want to point out that you may or may not know about. West Haven in Franklin, Tennessee, that happens to be where I live. Two of these images are from West Haven. Berry Farms, which is newer than West Haven, and Stevens Valley, which is the newest traditional neighborhood that has been developed or is under development in Franklin. In Nashville, the first traditional neighborhood development, and actually both Phil and I were involved in then, in that project in different capacities. That was the first one in the region and, and that one is in Nashville. There's Carruthers Farm and then there's also the Village of Providence in Huntsville, Alabama. Next slide. Just wanted to point out that again, we did have a survey, a public opinions survey for the comprehensive plan. And one of the questions was what types of housing do we need more of in Tallahassee? Single family houses certainly was the number one, but just behind that, you can't probably see it. It's the, the last one. It's all of the above. So townhouses, multifamily, family housing, and so forth. So, you know, regardless of what happens with this, at least the people that, that took this survey, they had an interest in seeing that mixture of housing types. Next slide. So with that, I want to explain how the original TNN locations were chosen. We looked at large tracts of land with simple ownership because it allowed you to have a master planned development. We also looked at location near schools and community facilities. So the, the location on the, on the, I guess that would be the east was near East Middle. The location on the west was west, was near West Middle. And the location to the south was through, was near Johnson Lane Recreation Area. So that's, that's, that was really the driving force behind these locations. They gave us the opportunity to look at different characteristics and get a more, a more planned, master plan develop, form of development. Next slide. So if you decide as a community to keep the TNN place type, you might ask, how should we implement it? And really, it's quite simple. You could create a new zoning district, maybe a floating zone district that has all of the standards or use the planned unit development tool to, to allow for the same type of development. Now, the planned unit development, I know, has been criticized as a tool and the planned unit development is not always the best choice to do a traditional neighborhood, but it really depends on how the planned unit development is, is written in the flexibility that, that it has. The images that we showed during, in the plan during the charrette were actually from a traditional neighborhood development that my company designed a few years ago in, near Oxford, Mississippi. And we actually used the planned unit development tool to implement it. And, you know, the, the good thing about a planned unit development is that it requires a master plan so the community knows what they're getting. And if the developer wants to change it, they got to come back and ask for permission, you know? So there is, there is an upside to use it, but the same could be said for a, a new zoning district that gets you all the standards you want to make sure that your vision for this is implemented. Next slide. So when I talk about standards, again, this is from the, the PUD booklet that we put together for this neighborhood in, in Oxford. It has all kinds of standards, standards for buildings, standards for architecture, standards for street types, standards for the buildings themselves, the different building types, even determines how those building types are distributed and, and how much of them. So there, you can dial it up or dial it back. That's, that's the beauty of having that kind of tool to implement if you choose to keep this. Next slide. Just two more slides about the downtown public space. The idea for the downtown public space came out of the public engagement process. There was never an intent for this space to take the place of the South Jackson Civic Center or the space around it. The idea was simply to create a gathering and performance space in the heart of downtown where none currently exists and could actually encourage economic spinoff. The Trader's Bank site was identified as the, the best, one of the best locations for this, but of course, it's not the only locate, location. But, and we, and we talked with the property owners and we said, can we show a concept just to illustrate what this might look like? What it actually would be designed to be, would be decided later if you decide to implement such a space. So next slide. So I think it's important to talk about the differences and advantages of both of these. So the differences is that one is really primarily outside versus being inside. One is an open space versus the south. One is an open space versus the South Jackson Civic Center. It's, the building is the main feature of that space, and it has an auditorium. You're talking about flexible seating versus fixed seating, festival space versus performance space, and the surrounding businesses for economic spinoff versus not having as much of those businesses around the South Jackson Center. Now, there are advantages to having both. First of all, you accommodate a broader range of events, and the spaces can work together in tandem to create a broader diversity of options and accommodate simultaneous events. And again, you're just providing more options for touring groups and that are coming through to find the space for them that works. With that, I'll turn it over to Liesl.
All right, good evening. So I'm going to be speaking about the mobility portion of the, of the plan. I'm just going to hit on a couple of key concepts first before I dig into the recommendations. So transportation planning and traffic engineering is generally concerned with the safe and efficient movement of people and goods. It's a rapidly changing field, specifically as it relates to availability of data, so communities are able to hit on big data and make more informed decisions based on that data. There's also electric vehicles and automated vehicles, which we heard a lot about in the public engagement. Vision Zero and bikeway design, we're seeing that evolve, essentially from the traffic engineering side, which is historically focused on more of a siloed approach, looking at highways. So now, traffic engineering, as well as planning, is kind of moving more towards what actually happens, and that is transportation and land use decisions impact each other. So you make a decision on one, it's going to impact the other. As you all may know, there are limited, there is limited funding, but there's a lot of needs out there. And so, providing that balance and trying to find that right, again, balance between those transportation and land use decisions is important. Next slide, please. Okay, so level of service is typically something that traffic planner, or transportation planners and traffic engineers look at to evaluate a transportation network. For automobiles, that is called the vehicular level of service. It's similar to a school grading scale, so A through F. E and F are generally considered failing, which means that's when some type of improvement is certainly warranted at that point. For bicyclists and pedestrians, level of service is determined by the level of safety and protection that people walking and biking experience. So you can kind of see there, well, slightly through those pictures. Basically, if it's an A, it means that there's a nice wide sidewalk. If it's an F, there may not be any sidewalk at all, and you're being forced to walk in a ditch. Level of service also applies for vehicles at intersections. So that's something that traffic engineers look at to, again, to see how much capacity is being utilized for how the roadway is constructed. You may not be able to see those numbers there on the bottom of that chart, but it is essentially a function of the delay that is experienced at a vehicle, or at an intersection, excuse me. So if you have less, if you have a level of service A, you may have, cheating there, less than 10 seconds for each vehicle of waiting. So it's really, again, it's a function of delay and matter of seconds. It is also important to, again, you see the scale there. A roadway's design is really impacted by a number of different elements. You gotta think about the speed limit, the types of users you have, and on the bottom right there, that relates to functional classification. And that just means that some roadways are designed to carry more traffic at higher speeds, while some are kind of in the middle in terms of collecting traffic from subdivisions, for example, and dispersing them to your arterials, so like in North Jackson. Then you have a local street, which those are more of like your subdivision, local neighborhood streets, and they typically carry lower amounts of traffic. Next slide, please. So I'm going to speak in some generalities here in terms of best practice for transportation network design. Ideally, you want a connected network that is safe for all people, regardless of mode and ability level. It's also one that is ADA accessible, which means that wheelchairs are able to use those facilities. From a roadway and a street design, some of the elements that impact a street's design is, again, the road hierarchy. What is the function of that roadway intended to be? Access management, which Telahoma's municipal code and subdivision regulations already have some type of, or some elements of access management included. So that may mean making sure that your traffic signals aren't bunched up together. For example, it may also have to do with the number of driveways along a roadway, which driveways basically increases your points of conflict, so you may have more crashes. Safety, obviously, is a big important and a big element. Streetscape, for some roadways, may make sense. I know you guys had the North Jackson Streetscape Plan done several years ago. And then again, you have level of service and place types. Next slide, please. Then I'm going to hit on a little bit more of what Keith talked about in terms of, the better connectivity that you have from your roadway network, generally, the better. It decreases travel distances. It also increases route options, which helps to disperse the traffic across the network. It can also play into, a big one is emergency response. I know we worked with a community or a small neighborhood, I guess, an area in Chattanooga, and that was a big problem for them, in that they had a lot of cul-de-sac neighborhoods, and it was making their response times increase. And so they were going to have to either make some connections in their existing roadway network or build an additional fire station. So that's just one of the example of, there's really benefits across numerous disciplines aside from traffic. Next slide, please. Okay, in terms of transportation planning documents, we're up here at the top, so this is really at the visioning level. You have your comprehensive plans where transportation is simply an element of that overall plan. You have long-range transportation plans, comprehensive transportation plans, and I should say, as we go down the list here, generally, the level of analysis, the level of data, gets more refined to be fed into the engineering stage of projects. So Telahoma has a comprehensive transportation plan that we incorporated into our planning document, as well as the mobility plan that was just completed back in 2019. It included analyses for several of the major corridors based on the level of service. So again, we took a lot of what was from those previous plans and moved them forward. On down the list, you do have major thoroughfare plans. That's where you're really going to get into the details of the growth, impacts on transportation networks, projects, and your more detailed, refined analyses. And then furthermore, as you kind of get into the corridor studies and intersection studies, that's where the planning and the engineer starts to get a little gray, and it's really starting to move towards that engineering project development process. So again, we're there at the top of the list. Slide, please. Okay, so for this plan, they look all different. All types of plans look differently. They're not all one-size-fits-all approach. So, for Telahoma's plan, the main emphasis was on better marrying the land use with the transportation. Because again, like I mentioned, oftentimes, transportation and land use decisions are made kind of in a vacuum, but we know that they impact each other. So that is one very important aspect that we were asked to do with Telahoma's plan. Then we also looked at the infrastructure improvements, largely carrying forward what had been previously identified in those most recent plans. In terms of the data and assumptions that we used, again, the previous plans, but we also have access to TDOT statewide data sets. So count stations, their seasonal counts, crash data, those types of, that types of big data. We also rely heavily, since this is at the vision level process, we rely heavily on input from stakeholders. So the city departments that look at these roadways every day, for example, TDOT is an important partner in that. TDOT maintains the state highways. And so, they have a whole statewide travel demand model. Like I mentioned, they have count stations, I would say 40 or 50 count stations that are collectively, continuously collecting data, and they're more concerned with regional travel. In addition, we also completed some field observations and as well as leaned on our knowledge of national design guidance and other roadway standards. Next slide, please. Okay, so one of the major outcomes, again, had to do with the roadway, street types. Essentially, what we did, we took the cross-sections that you see there at the top. Those are from the 2013 plan. And so we basically applied, based on the place types, those types of cross-sections that are appropriate for each place type. So there on the bottom, you can kind of see an example. These are essentially just snapshots of what a road could look like. Doesn't mean that all the roadways in that place type should look like that, nor should they be reconstructed to do that, because that would just not be financially possible. This is strictly for new streets and/or when there is a big project, for example, widening Cedar Lane, for example. These are intended to be a guide to kind of see what types of multimodal elements, as well as your utilities, streetlights, those types of things. We did make slight changes to those dimensions that were in the previous plan, again, based on national guidance. So that largely related to the sidewalk width, bikeway types, as well as the buffer between the edge of the pavement and that facility. Basically, again, like I mentioned, the engineering field is starting to kind of be in this renaissance of learning, using the crash data, and providing better facilities for all the users using a transportation system. Next slide, please. Okay, so I was asked to, there may be some confusion in terms of what a right-of-way is, and this is essentially the footprint where a roadway sits. These vary all across the board. A photo on the left is over near the city cemetery, and you can see examples of local streets. Those are parcel lines that you see there. And that illustrates basically the variation in right-of-way. So, I think we lost sound there. So basically, just to show, there we go, show the variation and kind of what is already out there currently. The one on the right is if you are at First Baptist, heading towards Evoqua, you may notice that the sidewalks are very far off the roadway. That right-of-way currently is 110 feet. The purpose of a right-of-way is multiple reasons. It includes to accommodate utilities, drainage. It also can be a function of how fast the roadway traffic is. So think about the Manchester Highway, how the right-of-way is very wide, and that's because the speed limit is so fast. So again, always thinking towards safety. And just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page in terms of what the public right-of-way is. Again, the cross-sections provided in the plan are simply a snapshot of what they could look like. There are minimums already currently in Telahoma's regulations, per street type, based on function, so arterial, collector, and local. Next slide, please. Terms of the vehicular improvements, we really wanted to focus on the intersections that should be further studied. There is a national standard called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTC. So when you look at an intersection and to whether or not a traffic signal should go in, that is actually determined by complicated graphs, such as that one. Basically, has to do with the traffic on the approaches, making sure it's somewhat balanced. The reason why we decided to focus on intersections is because we heard a lot about improving connectivity within the city. That usually typically means maximizing your existing assets, your infrastructure, and most of the time, when you're experiencing congestion, it's a bottleneck issue. So signals, basically. So whether or not there should be a signal, or the signal isn't functioning as it should be, we identified those intersections based on what we heard in our meetings. In terms of widening, I know there was some questions about that. Cedar Lane was largely what we heard, again, from all the different discipline stakeholders that we spoke with. We did discuss a potential bypass with TDOT. I know that that was mentioned. However, from their perspective, and this is something that would be driven largely by them, so albeit unless if we have a governor from Telahoma at some point, TDOT's going to be in the driver's seat there. They said that based on the existing cross-section of North Jackson, being four lanes with the center turn lane, that roadway can actually accommodate about double the traffic and still maintain an efficient level of service. Now again, that doesn't mean that you just sit aside and it's functioning properly. Perhaps the traffic signals need to be updated. But from their perspective, looking at their traffic projections, understanding of level of service, they said it would be a pretty darn big, long shot for a bypass, particularly to the west of Telahoma. There is a project that we moved forward that was already on the plan. It connects Ledford Mill down to Highway 130, possibly State Route 55, but I can't confirm that. So, we felt that, based on all of that information, based on what we heard from, in terms of the downtown, people not wanting growth because a bypass essentially opens the gate to new development, those were some of the reasonings that we decided not to include a bypass. Next slide, please. Terms of the bicycle, pedestrian, and greenway recommendations, these are largely from that 2019 plan that also had significant public engagement. So we wanted to carry those forward and add any more that we heard about. So based on, specifically for the schools, that was a major takeaway, that since there are no public buses to take kids to school, it's important to provide sidewalks within a walk shed of those schools. Those are just some of the examples. We also added some additional greenway connections based on some of the ideas that we heard through our engagement process. But these are largely based on that previous plan, plus some. Next slide, please. Okay, so the implementation of these projects, the plan is really a guide. It's not the end-all-be-all. Not all roadway projects come from a plan. There are city departments, Public Works is in charge of analyzing the roadway network, capital improvement budgets, those are developed annually, so those are also opportunities to include new projects. Developments can be an important way, specifically as it relates to greenways and sidewalks. Telahoma currently requires the addition of sidewalk on one side of new subdivisions, and it does give the Planning Commission the option and flexibility there in terms of those requirements, to make sure that the infrastructure is provided in the right place. It is a living document. Ideally, community plans should be updated every five years. Unfortunately, in Tennessee, it's not a requirement to plan. However, it's good practice based on changing However, it's good practice, based on changing traffic, changing residents and demands, to update it every five years. It's also possible for the elected bodies to make amendments to pant, to plans after they have passed. We just finished a major thoroughfare plan for the city of Nolansville. As you know, they may, as you may know, they are growing like crazy. And between the time, in just one month, between the Planning Commission and the City Council approval, the map had already changed because developments had already been approved. And so that just kind of gives you an idea of what some communities deal with. So there are process, processes to amend those plans following their, their approval. I also mentioned TDOT. They're a very important partner in this. Not only the state highways, but they're also updating the functional classification of roadway networks across the state. Region three, which is the region we are in, is one of the next ones that they're going to be looking at. And they're going to be considering the regional traffic and that growth in terms of whether or not the functional classification should be updated, meaning the design of the road, are improvements needed. Furthermore, there are some other avenues for projects, that being the state legislation. So for example, the Improve Act that raised the gas tax a couple cents, that's how I-40 was widened, for example. Otherwise, I-40 wouldn't have been widened. So there are some other ways and avenues that projects do get completed. Finally, I will hit on the state grants, which Telahoma has been actively going after. You may have seen the public meeting for Anderson Street. That was for purposes of going after a grant, to do those more detailed analyses of the intersection, as well as the design details of what an improvement could look like. Same with the Cedar Lane widening with TDOT's Community Transportation Grant. Be on the lookout for those public meetings. But again, they'll be doing more detailed analyses in terms of counting the traffic as they turn and building a model and a design that's going to work best for Cedar Lane. So I just wanted to cover all that in terms of, the plan is really not the last end-all, be-all for transportation projects. Next slide.
So I guess with that, we'll just open it up to questions? And I'm not sure how we're going to do that, if there's a mic that'll roam around, or...
The, the board, actually, I don't believe the board has any questions, but at this point, we will open it up for public comments. So if you have, if you have signed the roster for public comments tonight, the city recorder has your, has your name. Or she does that, let me say thank you to so many citizens who've come tonight, who care about the future of your city. So this crowd indicates we have a bright future. So thank you again for being here. At this time, when we call your name to come up to the microphone for public comments, I am not going to restrict you to three minutes tonight. If you have more to say than three minutes, we're here to listen. And we're going to take your comments and we'll act on them. So at this time, I'll defer to our city recorder. You can start calling people to, for public comments.
Watson, here she comes.
Mr. Mayor, let me add to that. If there's a question, there might be someone here that would be, we could have some back-and-forth dialogue, too.
I'd none, I was going to be first, I would not have showed up early. I do not like public speaking. First, I want to say good evening to everyone. I'd like to thank you for the open house meetings and the town hall meeting tonight. It's very much appreciated, and I've learned a lot. And thank you for the Walker Group coming back and visiting us tonight. We do need growth in some areas in Telahoma. Right now, our tax base is dependent upon retail stores. We need industry jobs to balance that out and stabilize the situation to gain a better tax base. There are some great things in the plan, a lot of things that I personally like, but I do have some questions and concerns. My question tonight is multifaceted, and I know the first question you can't answer. First, is there a financial plan for implementing the 2040 plan to grow our city? This will affect all citizens. I understand, once you get started in the plan, that you will have more details about cost. Maybe a five-year plan with a two-year rolling due to market changes. The concern right now is if you look at our city maintenance, sorry, this is hard to talk, there are, there does not appear to be enough staff to handle issues we have now. Our current roads, drainage, and sidewalks need attention now. We have a road that is closed due to a metal culvert disintegrating and having issues getting it repaired at a reasonable rate due to supply and demand issues. How will our growing infrastructure be paid? Will surcharges be assessed on new homes? I understand the city would like to see a growth rate of 2% per year for the next five years. That's a 10% growth rate to our community in five years for our small town. It has not been that in a very long time, only about a 1% rate in the last 10 years. I understand we want controlled growth to help control the expenses and overwhelming cost of our infrastructure. I understand that the city will use permits to control those, this cost. So the question, will we be denying builders' permits if we've exceeded the 2% growth rate? A secondary question, if big-box builders, developers apply for a large number of permits, meeting the 2% growth rate, what will that do to local builders? And how do you ensure they have a fair chance? To recap my questions, what and how will you develop a financial plan? Will taxes go up, affecting all citizens? In other growing towns, this seems to be the case. Will analysis be done for additional city employment needs so that we maintain the functionality of our infrastructure and aesthetics of common areas? This includes road maintenance, engineers, code departments, police, fire department, et cetera. Will there be church charges on houses? If not, why? Because it would help offset the upfront cost. And how do you control the building permits to control and not exceed the 2% growth? What are the checks and balances? And who is keeping count? I grew up in Telahoma, and I've lived most of my life here. I was a Girl Scout till I was 18. Talk about small town. As a scout, we had a saying, "Make new friends, but keep the old. One is silver and the other's gold." I ask that during the process of implementing this plan to our town, you do not focus and cater to the big-box developers who will come and go. And you consider the economic and social responsibility you have to all the citizens of Telahoma, as our citizens are our goal. I thank you so much for being here. I do have a few other concerns, real quick. We have a lot of clay soil, I've brought this up before. A lot of houses are now being built on slabs, and I do have concern, as that is the worst kind of soil to build a slab home on. So I hope someone is looking at that situation. Also, our water, Bobo Creek is on the Anderson Farms property. It does run into Short Springs, which runs into our water supply. So I hope we will take these things seriously and protect our citizens. Thank you so much.
As I might add, as our city recorder called your name, she might call out the next person to be on deck, and then who's going to be following that. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab. There were a whole lot of questions there, and quite a few of them were economic tax-related. And we didn't have it on our radar screen that there'd be those kind of issues, and we didn't bring our economist, I think he was unavailable anyway. But I'll, I'll give it a shot. One of the questions was about sort of the overall cost. And, you know, it wasn't in our scope to try to come up with a cost, and we've never worked on a comprehensive plan where that was part of it. And I've never even seen one that does that, although I'm sure somewhere out there is a comp plan that tries to put a price tag on it all. But the reason is that, first of all, when you think about what a comp plan addresses, most of it is private property, right? And that's why the place type section is such an important, really the key meat of the plan, but that's all private sector development. When it comes to the public expenses, like some of the things that Leesal's talking about, roads and, and so forth, usually you have to engineer that to be able to figure out what the cost is going to be, right? And we're obviously not engineering that. And I bet if, if you somehow did try to put a price tag on it, and this would apply to any community with any comprehensive plan, people would throw up their hands and go, "We can't afford that," because the numbers would be huge, right? But people don't take into account the fact that these kind of plans are implemented incrementally over time, as funding becomes available, especially with transportation, there's a lot of funding sources, you know, Leesal talked about that. So anyway, that's, that's the, the cost side. On, oh, growth, I guess, was brought up, and there was a suggestion that we might try to, want to cap growth at like 2% a year. And our plan doesn't do anything to address that. In fact, there aren't too many communities, and I wouldn't think that's really an issue here. It is in a lot of communities where there's this too much growth, they can't get their, their hands around it. But, trying to think some of the other issues. Oh, the slab construction, that's interesting. I will say, we talked about, Keith showed a lot of photos of TNNs, you know, traditional neighborhood new. Because of the design standards that usually come with those, for houses, they almost always require a raised foundation, just for aesthetic purposes as much as anything. And so typically, you don't have a slab foundation for, for residential development in those types of neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Our city recorder would need, read the next, and next person up. You'd also give us the next one on deck and in the hole, so they could be in line.
Jerry Honick. And then next up after him will be Gail Bryant. Okay, Gail's going to skip. Bob Bates. This gentleman should be Jerry Honick.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Jerry, and I want to thank you all for hosting, for the team coming back. Awesome. All in all, I think the plan has a lot of merit. And having listened and learned over the last year about the process and the protocols for implementation, I was in the Air Force for a long time. One of the fundamental doctrines was counting the cost, assigning the expenses to specific accounts, and then measuring whether that's sustainable. If it is sustainable, go. If it isn't, stop. Step back, maybe reexamine. And question that come to mind, similar to the first citizen, was, has our city conducted and published a comprehensive fiscal feasibility study that funds all public obligations and implementation costs as expressed and implied by the Think Telahoma 2040 strategic plan? I'm pretty sure that's rhetorical, where it would be premature if anyone said yes. I think we'd all just say, "Great, we're out of here." But we haven't done that yet, and I've heard citizens describe their angst over the absence of documented planning. So the first answer would be no. We haven't really measured implementation costs, as was just mentioned. That's not what they were commissioned to do. Second to that, though, have 100% of the city's infrastructure upgrades that would be implied been incorporated into our thinking and into the prospective implementation of the 2040 plan. It's been mentioned by many that children walking to school in the absence of a sidewalk walk in the culverts, if it's dry or not too deep. They're very close to the road, and it seems unsafe. I've driven very cautiously, because there are children out, and the roads are narrow, as we all know, 30 mile an hour max speed limit in most areas. We all know, though, that was maybe put in place before we went digital. In the analog world, maybe people paid more attention when they got behind the wheel. So they're not necessarily going 30 or slower, they're not necessarily attentive to all of the factors that go into driving safely. And children without sidewalks having to go to school if they don't have a ride from their family are at greater risk. So that's an infrastructure necessity, as according to the citizens I've been listening to. The drainage system includes the roads themselves and the culverts beside the roads, and as we saw last August in Waverly, it, it doesn't take much for a culvert to not do what it's designed to do. And if we're in the middle of a deluge, and it, and the water's rising, I'm not sure what our options are. So if we've addressed that already, I'm sorry if I missed it, but given the most recent example of those 21 who lost their lives, I believe that is an absolute imperative for Telahoma to, you know, come up with a specific written remediation plan. Oh, and I didn't mention it, but we all know the workforce has kind of collapsed. We, we can't get contractors. The ones we can locate are task saturated, and the prices of everything is climbing. So, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. So assigning the costs if we've measured them and legitimately funding those would be the questions we'd ask before we'd ask whether this is a sustainable set of options. And I know we're obliged to do this about every 10 years, we can realign with a previous plan, but this is an ambitious plan. I think it's intelligent for the 21st century. I'm just concerned about the fundamental things that maybe the people who were here 100 years ago, who worked a very different life and established the strengths and the spine of Telahoma, and then their children, so maybe great-grandparents, grandparents, parents who preceded most of us, really worked a whole different life and established foundational strength, that maybe it's time for us to try to catch up some of what they established before we proceed very assertively, because we don't, I mean, where I was stationed between Napa and Sacagawea... Because we don't, I mean, where I was stationed between Napa and Sacramento, it might have rained five inches a year. We get five inches a month on average here by the map I looked at, and we don't have a governor on that. So for safety's sake, it's popular to say, "For the children's sake." I have children. They're in five other states. But I hope that we can do this reasonably and measure wisely, because once we say yes as a community, we all know we cannot unring that bell, and it may get away from us. And if we haven't caught up and remediated things that are necessarily needing attention already, if that's true, I'm not in public works, I'm just looking around and listening, then we'll be a little bit further behind. Just thanks again for all that you do. This public service, I mean, it's incredible. That's what we love. You are what we love about Tallahoma. And thank you to you as well.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Walker, you have any comments?
Right, just to hit on a couple of things. There is a section on sidewalks. You know, we agree that you definitely need more sidewalks. And so there's a map that Leesal put together to expand the current sidewalk system, as with greenways and other things. When it comes to flooding, we had a bunch of recommendations on how to try to mitigate flooding. For example, trying to discourage disturbance of existing floodplains. You know, right now, you can do cut and fill and raise the level so that development's out of a floodplain, but we had recommendations that would avoid disturbing them to begin with. We also had recommendations for green infrastructure, like bioswells, rain gardens, and things that are alternatives to just piping rainwater and dumping it somewhere, but to let it, you know, percolate back into the natural environment. So there is a lot of stuff on infrastructure and things with just maintenance of storm drains and that sort of thing. But very good points made.
Next up.
Next up, Bob Bates, and then Greg Burchard and John Perez.
Good evening. I've attended all of the meetings that we've had on this planning from the beginning, and I have seen lots of citizens involved in this process that were very, very, very knowledgeable about the plan. I was really surprised. I mean, I know we have a lot of smart citizens, but the depth of their detail was unbelievable. Ms. Watson is one of them. And I want to commend those people for coming and participating in this. Their insights will be very valuable to us, and I want to commend them and encourage their continued involvement. There was a question at one time, and I don't know what happened on the process, but somebody was going to check and see if this was a comprehensive plan or a growth plan. Has that process been completed?
That was I. I checked on that. Actually, in the very early pages of this document, it defines what it is. It is a comprehensive plan. There is an urban growth plan that the county adopted about before 2010 that we're bound to follow if we are developing anything beyond our city limits. This plan is confined to the city limits, to the city of Tallahoma. It does no go beyond that, and is a comprehensive plan.
Somebody was going to ask Attorney General or something.
Well, I haven't developed the right kind of question to ask to the Attorney General. Here's two reasons why. We have a pending matter that we referred to Attorney General in July, for which we not received an answer yet. And I was kind of waiting to see how things developed before I developed a question to send to him about that. There are three different kinds of plans that cities can become involved in in Tennessee. None of them except the growth plan, the comprehensive growth plan for the area, is mandatory. This is not a mandatory plan. It's perfectly, you know, if we want to do that. So I'm going to develop the right kind of question at the right time, but I will say to you that the legislature, in its infinite wisdom, has created a lot of discrepancies between the three plans, and they're hard to decipher. And I think maybe the Attorney General will be just as perplexed as I as trying to address these plans. We're going to try to do that for you, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Assuming that we have a comprehensive plan, I'd like to ask, Phil, if most comprehensive plans include some kind of planning for emergencies, for crises that may come up, unknown things that will affect the economy of the town, and especially the plan that is developed at that time. Could you answer that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So Bob really helped shed a lot of light on issues related to resiliency early in the project and, you know, the potential for flooding, you know, catastrophic occurrences, and really kind of pushed us to address that. Now, it wasn't in our scope, but we thought it was a good idea. And so we have a section on resiliency, but we recommend that the city consider doing a resiliency plan. I mean, a plan focused just on that issue. We've never, this is the first time we've addressed that issue in any comprehensive plan, but it's something we're seeing a whole lot more of with climate change. And so I think there'll be a lot more communities that are looking at this when you have flooding like what was mentioned about in Waverly not long ago and places like that. So I guess the bottom line is, our plan addresses resiliency, but not in a real detailed way, and we recommend potentially another plan just on resiliency.
Resiliency is not really defined really well in the comprehensive plan, even though it's in the executive summary. But since this is the first time, and we've tried to put this in there, what we're trying to identify is the ability of the community to withstand major economic setbacks from various areas. It could be something like COVID again, that shuts things down. It could be a natural disaster that would cause a problem. It could be from various angles. And so the comprehensive plan, and since it does talk about resiliency, I'd like to make sure that maybe we look at the recommendation from the, from TWC about maybe developing a resiliency plan that goes in as an addition or a sub, an addition to this plan, not necessarily part of it, but it might be something separate like the traffic plan was or something like that. That would try and cover us in what we're going to have to do if we ran into some kind of economic problems. I don't know if there's anybody that doesn't think that economic problems are not looming out there somewhere, and some of them we don't know about, some that we can imagine. But I think as a community, we need to cover our rear when it comes to that kind of thing. We need to be planning for it. We need to have it in mind when we're making decisions all along on each individual thing. So I want to thank Phil for doing that. In addition to resiliency, this is the first comprehensive plan that has specifically, that Walker collaborative has done, that specifically mentions global climate change. And I'd like to ask Phil if he would address that a little bit as to why that's an important thing.
Yeah, and by the way, before I get into that, economic resiliency was brought up, and we do have an economic development section of the plan. And one of the best ways to be more resilient economically is to have a diversified economy, right? And so a lot of the, even though it looks at how do you leverage even more Arnold base, but also it looks at how do you increase tourism and other sectors of the economy so you have a more diversified economy. Back to the question, though, about why it's important in the plan to bring up the issue of resiliency. You know, the American Planning Association has gotten involved with resiliency in a pretty major way, and they've pointed out climate change as being one of the greatest threats that we've seen perhaps ever, and that it's important to have plans that acknowledge that and that respond to that. So the plan we've done does have a section on resiliency. It talks about the American Planning Association's kind of general principles on dealing with resiliency, and I think that's about it.
Bob, I mean, comments that I have made and emails to the planning director, almost, and to some others also, and made as a comment at one of the meetings, I think it was the first August meeting that I made the comment at was. We need to include, and resiliency, by the way, is a local thing. The more resilient we are locally, the less global effects will affect us economically. The more we have and, the more that we reply, can't get the word out here. Can't remember what else, the word I was trying to say. More we rely on our local region for supplies, for materials, for those kind of things, the better off we're going to be, and the less likely we'll be to be negatively affected by global supply chain stuff that we have no way of controlling whatsoever. But if we promote local businesses, we promote local community development, then we're going to be more resilient. So I just wanted to bring that one more local thing up, if I could. And the comment that I've made is that we either need to take any references to resilience and global warming, or not global warming, global climate change, out of this plan completely, or we need to pay attention to it in every action that is taken by this city. So one or the other. And so in the spirit of that, I would like a show of hands from you. Would who all believes in global climate change? Please raise your hand.
It's not appropriate at all.
I would like a show of hands, please, or the board, the people that believe in global climate change, please raise your hand. Do you believe in human-induced climate change?
I think that when you get into the why and who is responsible.
That's possible. We can debate that, yeah, but it either needs to be included in the plan or not. Okay?
Let's talk about it separately, like we've done with transportation sidewalks. Let's put a focus on what you're saying.
Be glad to.
Let's figure out why we become more dependent upon ourselves, but we're not dependent upon outside as much as possible. So I don't think the whole plan is not all or nothing. It's a, this could jump, if we can take that, now let's go through and define, but leave the politics part out, you know, who and why and what. We know weather patterns change. We know that there's cycles. So let's focus on what we can do if there's, if there's a giant tornado, if those things happen. Let's address it that way versus focusing all on the, yeah, the things that are going to hit all sides kind of, "I don't want to touch this guy." Let's focus on what we can all agree on. And I think we can all agree, giant tornado comes through, or giant flood comes through, we're bad shape, so let's go ahead and plan.
That's good. Then take all the references to global warming out of the plan. Because they put it in because the American Planning Association recognizes it as one of the number one systemic issues facing humanity right now. It's in the American Planning Association guidelines. So let's either take it out completely, or let's pay attention to it, one or the other. That's all I'm asking.
You made your point very well. And while I indicated I would not limit you to your three minutes tonight, I would ask that you be respectful of those others who might be wanting to speak this evening, so if you would do that, please.
That's fine. Okay. Also want to make sure that everybody understands that perpetual growth is not an end-all. First of all, it's an oxymoron. It can't possibly happen over a long period of time. Every civilization that human records have has collapsed because people haven't paid attention to that kind of thing. It's okay to have a good community, solid community, a local community that care about themselves, but it does not mean that you necessarily have to have growth. You might have slight growth. You might have some times when you don't have any growth, you actually have a decline. But if it's the community together and everybody's happy with the situation, that's what you want. You don't want growth to be your god. I want to make sure that I get that across. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Any further, any further address those?
Yeah, I don't know that it's a great idea to either have nothing about resiliency or the whole thing's about resiliency. I think, when you look at a comprehensive plan, the reason it's called comprehensive is because it's comprehensive in nature. You address a lot of things, but it needs to be sort of balanced. And I think the attention that it gives to it now is pretty adequate. I don't think it makes sense to pull everything out and just, you know, view it just completely black and white. You can have, you can address it at some level, and then maybe someone will want to do a plan specifically on that at some later point.
Thank you. Next on the agenda.
Next up, Greg Burchard, John Perez next, and Michael Glennon on deck.
Okay. My name is Greg Burchard, and I've lived here since 1975, most of the time. I went off to college and all that good stuff. Some of the biggest subdivisions affected by this plan is terrorist states, Macon Manor, Brookfield, and Blanton. We've worked hard to have a home in these neighborhoods. Yes, sorry. A lot of the four subdivisions really affected by this plan are terrorist states, Brookfield, Blanton Wood, Macon Manor. Us residents, we have worked hard to have a home that we live in. This high density of housing will only bring down our values and increase our taxes, which have not been mentioned. Infrastructure for these plans is going to be millions and millions and millions of dollars that has not been addressed. Guess who pays for it? Us taxpayers. One thing that wasn't mentioned about all these things, all these developments in Nashville, in one year, the mayor and the board increased taxes in Nashville over 33%. Guess who's going to pay for all this? It's going to be the residents of Tallahoma. And those four subdivisions I just mentioned, they don't want it, but yet you're going to pay for it. You're going to pay for it. Your consulting firm failed to mention this property, there'd be a great place that won't ruin subdivisions. It's in the Lake Hill vicinity. There's Lake Evoka there, plenty of farmland. If you want to do your high-density housing, that'd be a great place to look. You failed to do that. I'm surprised. I didn't hear that mentioned. That'd be a great place. One of the places that the consulting firm failed to mention for high-density housing, and they have plenty of acreage, plenty of farmland, is Lake Hills. That'd be a great place to have high-density housing. That'd be a great place to have high-density housing. And it won't bring down property values because there's no subdivisions out there. But our property taxes with this, the cost has not been mentioned. There has been grants mission, grants that have been mentioned that Telahoma's trying to get. Well, with those grants, it's still taxpayers that pay for it that was not mentioned. We need to do better. The people in Brookfield and Blanton Wood, you know, they're upset, and rightfully so. Let me give you a little history here. I've got some building plaits right here that I'll be happy to give you. This is minimum square footage for plaits in terrorist states was no less than 1,600 square feet for single-dwelling homes. Brookfield Phase 1, no less than 1,600 square feet. Phase 2, no less than 2,000 square feet. Blanton Wood, no less than 1,800 square feet. And Macon Manor, no less than 2,000 square feet. These are the type of homes that will not bring down our property values. Again, there's other places for this high-density housing that will not lower property values of subdivisions. And again, that Lake Hills would be a great site. But again, this is going to cost millions and millions of dollars. We have industry leaving Telahoma, not coming into Telahoma. That's what's failed to be mentioned. It needs to be mentioned. Our schools are packed. Our police departments, according to Daniel Berry, is understaffed. This is over a year ago when he told me this, so I take it as the word. We don't, I mean, we have things that we need to address now instead of this increase in housing, but this infrastructure is going to cost us a lot. Schools, police, fire departments, the list goes on. I hope we don't become Nashville and see property taxes increase more than 33%. This is going to cost big money.
Just a couple of comments. I know, you know, one of the concerns seems to be with the TNN, traditional neighborhood new, right? And Keith already explained how it was that we arrived at the recommendation, the recommended locations that we did. People talk about density, the gross density, if you read what we wrote for TNN, it says the gross density should be compatible with that of surrounding areas. What people have to understand is there's net density and there's gross density. Net density means there may be on a 200-acre site that's a TNN, there may be some enclave of housing that has, you know, 20 units per acre. However, it's offset by open space or larger lot areas and so forth. So when people talk about density, we're not talking about overall density that's incompatible with surrounding areas. It's just that there may be one little area with some townhouses that's higher density. But it says clearly the gross density should be compatible. And I can also tell you that if you had, let's say, you know, 200 housing units that were conventional subdivisions, and you had 200 housing units in a TNN, you would have less traffic generated from the TNN than the conventional large-lot subdivision because it's walkable, and you actually capture trips. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
John Perez, then we have.
Perez with an S.
Perez.
Yeah.
P-E-R-E-S. Then Michael Glennon and Shayla Glennon.
Okay. First, this up here where everyone can hear me here. First, I want to thank the board members and the commission and all the city employees here in the Walker Group for supporting this. Before I make a comment, I would like to explain something to you. At the last board meeting and several meetings before, I have, as you know, passionately spoken about my concerns. And I want to explain to you so you have a perspective of where that passion comes from. From 1972 to 1978, I spent two west packs up in the North Sea of Japan on fast-attack submarines, nuclear power carrying nuclear weapons. We did not go on one mission without knowing exactly what the plan was, where we were going to be, what threats there were up in the air, on the surface, and underwater. And if you can't do that assessment and fulfill your obligations, believe me, I know people get killed, and in an instant, World War III can break out. Also, from 19, or excuse me, from 2004 to 2011, I spent those years embedded with the Marines, going to Iraq and Afghanistan for pre-deployment training. They also do not do anything without a complete plan that addresses all issues, where trucks are, where assets are, where air assets are, ground assets, medical assets, fire, safety. All of that is important when you put a plan together. So the first question that I have, or comment that I have, is I had mentioned on two occasions that there is a ruling by the Tennessee State Supreme Court on spot zoning. I've asked twice to have it entered into the record, and I've asked the city attorney to look at it, and the answer that I got was he doesn't have time to look at it. As an example, I believe that, we're talking about Anderson Farms, 200 and some acres that was bought by a group in New York. That is who is on the record for that land deed. I have been told by some people that the city is in negotiations with that company on how to develop that land. And if that's the case, then I think the people of the city need to know that. If it's not the case, then we need to dispel that rumor. Because if you're going to take those 200 acres by itself and negotiate with an outside builders, okay, that have really no interest in Telahoma, their interest is it for a business, a business in businesses to make money. Okay? So if you take that 225 acres and rezone it from agriculture, R1, which it currently is now, to R2, R3, or R4, you're in violation of state law written by the State Supreme Court, the Justice Brock in 1983. So I don't know who to give this to, because if the city attorney doesn't have time, I would like somebody here to take the time to talk to the Attorney General of the state of Tennessee to make sure that we're not doing something illegal that's going to come back and get people sued and people kicked out of their houses, because that's what happened in this case. The second question that I have is, can, he asked earlier, a show of hands, and I'm not sure if you want to or not. How many of you know what ISO 2 on the side of our fire trucks are? How many? One, two, three, four? Do you know what ISO 2 is on the side? Walker Group doesn't know. ISO 2, International Standards Organization. The reason that's ISO 2 on the side of our trucks, okay? ISO rates the fire department within municipalities on a score of 1 to 10, 1 being the best, 10 being the worst. Okay? ISO 2 on our trucks, okay, means that our fire department can meet the state requirements for fire response time. Okay? I spoke to the chief earlier. The response time within the current city right now is somewhere between 2 minutes to 3 minutes. Okay? What winds up happening as you grow, that ISO rating changes. So if you go from ISO 2 to ISO 3, okay, that means their response time has increased. And why does that matter? 75% of both residential and commercial homeowners and business insurance rates are based upon the ISO rating of the fire department. Okay? So if you go from ISO 2 to ISO 3, the insurance agency has done researches that show that your homeowner's insurance or your commercial insurance can raise anywhere from 25% to 75% in one year. So if you're paying $300 a month now as part of your fire insurance of your homeowners, guess what? Next year, you build all out, and you don't build the fire stations, you don't do the roads right, okay? You're going to wind up paying $450. And then as you keep building, and it goes to the next one, it goes up another 25% to 75%. So I would like to see the plan put together as if it's a plan that depended on your lives, because that's how I'm used to operating. Just one quick comment here. It says, "By classifying the ability to suppress fires at the community level, the information ISO procedures can also help communities analyze their public fire protection services, emergency communications, community risk reduction, fire departments, and wastewater." In the plan, you showed multi-level residents right in the same zoning area as commercial property. That single resident or multi-level residence, because it's within one block, or maybe 50 feet, or even down below, might be a commercial company, your residential insurance rates triple when you are next to a commercial building, actually triple, because that commercial building usually has high-voltage systems in it, it has cooking systems in it, if it's cooking. So therefore, the risk that your house is going to go up in flames just went up by a factor of three. So there goes your insurance rates again. The next thing I would like to discuss would be, the information that was put up, and this is not a disparaging mark towards the Walker Group, I think they've done what they've asked to be done, but I find it surprising that here, the people in this community, and you reference Berry Farms up in Franklin. I just looked up Berry Farms. There's 14 houses for sale in Berry, up in Berry, is it Berry Fields? Berry Farms. Okay, the very first one, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, 1.1 million. The next one is four bedrooms, three baths, 980,000. Here's one that is identical to the one that you've shown in the picture, where you have house right next to house, right next to house. Okay? This one is two bedrooms and two baths for an asking price of almost $600,000. Our city can't support that. That's ludicrous. Why are we not doing a plan that reflects our community and not some community in Nashville or Franklin or somewhere else? I just don't understand that. Okay? Then the last comment that I have is, when I looked at the scope of work, it's on your website for the Walker Group, okay? It identified quite a few things in there that the Walker Group was supposed to do. And in that scope of work, it asked for an analysis on the impact to the municipality fiscal finances. And in fact, in their response to that scope of work, they devoted a whole paragraph at the bottom to a specific individual that was not only trained, certified, but had significant experience in fiscal municipal planning and impact. Okay? I asked the question, are we sure from a financial standpoint that we can support this plan? And when I asked that question, I asked it in relationship to our infrastructure, our streets, our water, everything. And the answer was no. And I said, well, you know, I find it hard to believe that you would do a plan and have in the scope of work to ask for that, and the outsourcing contractor that you gave it to gave you an answer that they had that capability, but no one asked for it. But it was in the scope of work. So those are the things that I think that, me as an individual, and I can only speak for me, I can't speak for everybody else here, I think those are the things that many people have questions about, is that we can't base our plan on some wish that we're going to be Franklin one day, or a wish that we're going to be Murfreesboro one day. I would like to have seen a plan that took the entire city the way it is right now and not make it a wish list for what we could be like 40 years from now. Why can't we take and look at a plan that says, here are all the buildings in town, here are ones that are available and not available, here's what we can do with this one, but we can't do with that one? I want to thank the board for their time, and I apologize for my passion, but I think that we can do better than this.
Okay, so that covered a lot of ground. Let me start off with the fiscal impact issue. Okay, let me start with the fiscal impact issue. Our economist does fiscal impact analysis all the time. Sometimes he does it as part of comprehensive plans. That was not part of our scope. What I'm guessing is, when we did the initial proposal, there are optional services. They all come with a price tag. One of the services that y'all bid on was the housing market analysis, but the fiscal analysis was not in the scope. It's not something the city asks to do. So that's that. On mixed use, it sounded like that's a problem. I mean, we've had mixed-use development for literally thousands of years. Your downtown that people love has apartments right by commercial uses, that's kind of how downtowns work, so I don't think that's a radical concept. When it comes to spot zoning, that's a very antiquated term, and let me tell you the basis of it. During the 1950s and 60s, when planners started planning only for the automobile, they had this mentality that you live in this district, you work in this district, you shop in this district, and guess what? You got to drive all over the place. Well, finally, when the smart growth movement came along, we realized that mixing uses makes a lot more sense and not segregating land uses and just having a blanketed acres and acres of the same, you know, one-acre zoning or whatever it might be. So back in that day when they had that mentality, if you tried to locate a nice little neighborhood center, you know, commercial area, it would be considered spot zoning. But that term's not even used anymore because it's just not relevant. And if you notice, the case law that was referenced was from the early 1980s that kind of underscores that point.
May I finish up with another question then? You addressed the spot zoning, okay? So I'm not sure how. I really didn't get an answer of how do I get somebody to take this to the state attorney general to get a ruling? I just kind of got this blank look, but nobody's providing answers. The second one, you're right, that was. That decision was based upon a 1954 decision that was then eventually based upon decision that was then eventually based upon a nineteen, uh, excuse me, a nineteen eighty-three decision. And that decision has not been overturned. So if you take that two hundred and fifty acres and you let that developer go through and put in high residential housing there, you are in violation of the Supreme Court of the state of Tennessee. Okay? The second one that you didn't address, okay, ISO standards for fired apartment. You showed all of these different streets up here, how they were all gonna interconnect. There are over a hundred, I looked it up today, a hundred different factors that come into play when the state is determining ISO level for the fire department. Those are how the roads are accessed, egress and ingress, they are the width of the streets, they are how many houses are on the streets, where the fire department, where the fire hydrants, okay? What is the composition of the roof on the houses? What is the composition of the commercial property around it? How many trees are in the area? Okay? Currently, right now, and if I'm not correct, okay, I may be wrong, in the city of Telahoma, our services for ambulances is covered by the county. We have no city ambulances. The fire department doesn't, the city doesn't. The county of Coffee County is fifty-five thousand people. You know how many ambulances we have here in the city of Telahoma? Four. Four people, or four ambulances for a population of twenty thousand. So I don't understand how you can take together and put together a plan without taking into consideration, and when I asked the chief this morning, I said, when was the last time you saw any modifications to this plan? Have you been involved in it? He says, nobody's asked me about it for nine months. Not one person has asked him for nine months, okay? He says he's still waiting for the state of Tennessee, because he's governed by the state of Tennessee, not the city. And the state of Tennessee hasn't answered him yet. But yet, you keep pushing forward and pushing forward and pushing forward, and people's lives are at stake. That's what I'm trying to get you to understand, that if you put houses next to each other that are so close and you don't have a fire department that can respond to that, people die. So a comprehensive plan should have all information in there about fire, about ambulance services. It also has to do with what level of hospital you have in the area, okay? All of those entities involve a plan that is how the future of Telahoma is going to look. So if you have right now, on the east side of town going towards Manchester, and you have a structure fire there and you need two ambulances, that leaves two ambulances left to cover the rest of all of Telahoma. Two, that's it. Somebody drops dead of a heart attack, sorry, ambulance can't get there on time. When you looked at the planning that was up there, no one, nowhere on those sheets did I see the fire department listed. Nowhere on that briefing did I see ISO.
When you hear the planning commission meeting, oh, there, we have a planning commission meeting that was prior to this meeting.
No, I-
So when a subdivision is proposed, right, once they actually bring it to, it goes through TUA, it goes through ERPA, it goes through fire, it goes through police. And so once you actually have, this is what we're going to build, the fire department is at that time involved, and they say, okay, we see what it is you're trying to build, now we'll be able to give you an opinion. But we can't just do that on just giant zone types, and stop me if I'm wrong there. So the fire department is involved in every, and you can go on Wednesday mornings at eight o'clock, there's a development committee meeting, those are just proposed, those aren't the actual, but before any housing or subdivision plan is presented to the city, the fire department is involved in that, and they do say, this is the impact. So I think that to say that they aren't involved in that is not quite right, just different phases of, different stages of the game. I do have a clarifying question, the very first question that you asked.
Excuse me?
What was the very first question you asked?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Spot zoning. So spot zoning is illegal, right? And we all know that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but what you're asking, can you clarify to me what specific zone request that's in front of us right now that you're, not the Supreme Court, which specific zone application is in front of us right now that we're gonna be voting on that you're asking if it is spot zoning?
Uh, I think if I understand your question, you're asking me to give an example of spot zoning right now?
Well, we know spot zoning is illegal, but which specific application are you suggesting that we're not considering?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not, you know, with the echo in here, I'm not understanding what you're asking.
Is there a specific rezone request that you're suggesting is spot zoning?
Uh, I think when it comes to spot zoning, okay, when I look at case law from the Supreme Court of the state, okay, spot zoning as an example would be those two hundred and twenty-five acres. They come in, they develop it, okay? The person next door, they're still zoned agriculture.
We understand what it is, but I'm asking, is there a specific, just so that I know, if there is a rezone request that comes before us, spot zoning is one of the things that Mary takes into consideration before it comes to us. So if there ever was a rezone request for Anderson Farms, that would be something that we would consider. But there's currently not an application to rezon Anderson Farms. But at that time, your point, I think, is very well taken, that we need to, as a board and as a commission, say, hey, is it or is it not? And at that time, we could probably get a decision if we need to. But just in general, I think we can all agree, spot zoning's illegal.
Yes. Yeah. Because when I look at that plan, there isn't anything in there that tells the public how you're going to implement that. Because if you take that two hundred and twenty-five acres, for example, and you work it out with a developer and you allow him to build houses in there, does that mean that, whatever it may be, I'll just use an example, the hundred and fifty acres next to him has also been rezoned?
I think it goes through the process that we just talked about, right? So the developer would submit a rezon request, it would go before the planning commission, there would be a public hearing on that, Mary would say, hey, I'm gonna give this a, if it's spot zoning, Mary's gonna say, I'm gonna give this a negative approval and recommend that you don't approve it. So at that time, there would be, but that's private property, so we're not implementing anything on that property.
Right.
But when it's time for them to do so, we'll probably need a room this size.
I don't want to take up everybody's time here, and we can discuss it at some other time if you want, Alderman, I would be happy to do that. It's just, um, I, and I, like I said, I can't speak for all the residents, but you either rezon all of it at one time, which you are not gonna do, so if you take and turn certain acreage into new, that is spot zoning defined by the Supreme Court of Tennessee. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Next.
But it does not automatically rezon any property. Any person who owns that property or buys that property would still have to go through the planning commission to rezon that property. Now, what would be binding on us is this plan if it was, if we denied it and it was in conflict with this plan. So yes, this plan would have a huge bearing on rezone requests, but it does not automatically rezon anybody's property.
Right. But I guess my comment to that would be that, uh, in that Supreme Court's case, it didn't have to do with how they laid out the land or the number of houses that were put on there. The whole issue was that the person next to them that has agricultural land or doesn't want to see five hundred apartments in there, they sued the county and won because the state Supreme Court said it is not in best interest of the town or the people to do that. Okay? Okay?
At this time, I'd like to ask the third recorder to-
Thanks, sorry to take up so much time.
Next up is Michael Glennon and Shayla.
Oh, just a couple things real quickly. On the fire station issue, we do address fire stations, emergency management, all that stuff, and in fact, we say, explore the feasibility of a third fire station. We say, provide an update to station number one, and believe me, I didn't dream that up, we actually communicated, I can't remember if it was the fire chief or who, but we definitely didn't just come up with that on our own, you know? We rely pretty heavily on the fire departments, uh, since they're the experts on those issues. So we did communicate on that. Also, uh, something that was raised earlier by the same gentleman, looking at the cost of housing at a traditional neighborhood development like Berry Farms up in Franklin, you know, real estate pricing is very location-specific. There's no reason why that kind of development can't work here financially. And also, there's a wide range of housing types, even garage apartments, uh, you know, townhouses, things that are small square footage-wise that are very affordable. So they have the widest range of price points that you'll find in one area in a traditional neighborhood development. So it's definitely doable here. Um, it also goes to show you how popular those things are, that they can command that kind of price up in Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay, up after-
Mr. Perez.
Hello, hello.
Mr. Perez.
Up after Michael and Shayla.
You have been up too long, please, please respect the other people's time to speak. Thank you.
Up after them will be, please get ready, Greg Gressel and Marvin Sellers are up.
My name is Shayla Glennon, and I'm a resident of 302 Twelve Oaks Road in Terra Estates. Thank you for your time. I wanted to say that I guess my main concern about the Think 2040 plan is when we talk about the public urban development, um, I don't know, I'm very concerned about our experience in dealing with those. Um, from what I understood tonight, it can be as open or as strict as the planning commissioner, planning commission and the developer want it to be. And, um, if something like this is gonna happen at Anderson Farms, uh, 'cause I live in Terra and that's my concern, is that, um, I want you to make a really, really smart decision on that. Um, we don't get a do-over on that, and if we make a mistake with that, that's something that our community has to suffer from. And I also, um, I just will say, I am familiar with Providence and Huntsville, Alabama. I worked down in Huntsville, I live in Telahoma. That's where I want to live, not leaving, staying here. Uh, Providence is good, great for, and Franklin are great for other folks, and I'm proud for them, they can have that. Uh, number two, uh, one of the things that I have had a concern about, and I wanted to address that again, is that if, when we do have developers who come in and do projects, I want to make sure that they have the access that they need to, for their property, and I think that should be their responsibility. I don't like the idea of them being able to, um, connect to other subdivisions. I know that's not, that's not really popular right now. That's my opinion about that, since they're gonna reap the benefits from that. And my final comment would be, citywide, and I don't know that it really has anything to do with Think 2040, but maybe a little bit, when you're thinking about the future is, I think citywide, we have problems, drainage problems. I've gone back and listened to a lot of the people who come forward to the planning commission, I hear drainage problems almost every time. And, um, the roads with the potholes, I'm just gonna say, we have lots of potholes. And so I would like for us to think about, I'm all for growth, but I would like for us to, um, take care of what we have and maybe get our drainage problems resolved and maybe work on our roads before we extend ourselves and our responsibilities to other people. And now my husband.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and the planning board and the BOMA group as well as Walker Group, thank you, being here. First of all, oh, I'm sorry. Move this out the way, there we go. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the plan for bringing out some of the public space of recreation, especially at Short Springs, expansion installation of the restrooms out there, and also the proposed Rock Creek Park. Also liked the, uh, market survey and comments you did in the plan, appreciate that, I did read that, I got some comments on that as well. Uh, some of mine's focused on the zoning for the 2040 plan. Uh, primarily, I was concerned with the linking of the R1 and the traditional neighborhood new. Uh, I would like to, and we talked about it earlier, I'd like to probably see that as a separate reference, that TNN versus not just the R1 linkage, so you had another zoning area, but that's just how the plan was written, so I just feel like that'd be reconsidered if we could. Also, in the plan, I noticed a wording when I read it, it's focused on regional and national residential developers to be recruited. That was the exact term I quoted out of there. I don't know why you'd write a plan that says regional and national residential will be recruited. Uh, I think we have several local housing developers that are fairly capable in a local area, who wouldn't know why we wouldn't consider local residential or local builders. Uh, some of the other statistics here is the 2040 plan states, um, that the market analysis done accounted for a comprehensive context determining that their potential for roughly two hundred and twenty to four hundred additional affordable market rate rental units within the city of Telahoma by 2026. A single pud would far exceed the noted growth rate. The section plan also stated apartments could stay as high as twenty families per acre, which was also stated earlier, and that was high density, of course. My question is, what's the city looking at two, five, and ten years from now, not just the 2040? So I just want to look at the plan, make sure we didn't miss the mark there, as we mentioned earlier. And specifically the Terras, since I live in Terra, the land that's being looked at, the two hundred and sixteen acres for the high density, for the TNN, is the Terran-making areas that are highly impacted with that. Um, the surrounding properties zone R1, uh, and right now, if we go with that plan, at least the draft that I looked at was like five hundred and some odd units, um, again, that's just a draft. If you go with that, that would far exceed the, uh, land use in the local area. Uh, for two hundred and sixteen acres and five hundred and forty homes, that's a pretty high-density area. And I think the plan also states, there's two-point-five persons per household per the plan. So just want to look at the zoning, make sure it's compatible with the local area. Similar houses is great, you know, I bought there because it was a one-way entrance, I love the nature that's in the area, be able to walk around the neighborhood and just, you know, enjoy the neighborhood without worrying about getting run over or having some lined road that I've always liked to live off of. So anyhow, I'd like to respectfully, uh, respect your time, and this reconsider some of the planned comments. Thank you.
Okay, I had an idea, now I'm trying to remember what it was that he raised, but the one thing I do want to talk about with the TNN, again, we said, the gross density would not be higher than what's compatible with the surrounding area. So you might have pockets that would be small areas that are higher density, but the overall gross density would not be. There was something, though, that, I don't know, that was a lot of stuff, I'm trying to think, can you think? Okay, I'm getting brain-dead here, sorry.
I'm sorry?
That was exactly about, we did specifically say that you need to get aggressive to recruit regional and national developers. The reason why, if you remember the first slide I presented that showed that the demand is not being met for housing, you gotta do something- is not being met for housing, you got to do something to get more housing built. It's not being, you know, demand's not being satisfied. And so there are very specific recommendations to try to recruit developers who are developing in other communities here to Tullahoma to meet the market demand.
Greg Gressel, and after Greg, Marvin Sellers, Chuck Dean.
Talking slow is not my forte, so I will do my best. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will start by saying, I believe still that growth is going to happen. It's how we're prepared for it, and I think we understand that. I would like to have a community that my kids could actually live in and move back to after school, but I don't know that we currently have that. So there's a lot of need here, but approaching it in the right direction is, is important. Honestly, some of this process is, has been quite tiring, I'm sure for you as well, but I feel like a lot is said, but I don't know if a lot is heard, because I don't really feel like we get a lot of response from what is said. So I just encourage that we have some good response. I appreciate the attempts to address, obviously, something very specific, and that being South Jackson Civic Center or South Jackson Performing Arts. I appreciate the attempt to address that, but I would have rather have been involved in the conversation instead of having to explain to you what's wrong with the attempts. Let me pull that up here. Outside versus inside, we wanted to compare venues. Those of you who know, or you're from here, would know and understand that we have a new patio stage that has a very nice, wide-open space, very usable, not confined. We have a courtyard stage that is also an outdoor space that is in a courtyard, so there is some confinement, but it is an open seating style venue as well. So that's open space versus auditorium. Auditorium's not the only thing we do. And if we want to do another one of these, I know in all respect that sound has always been a challenge in this room, but we do live streams at South Jackson, and we know how to do it without the echo and stuff, so call us. Flexible seating versus fixed seating, we've just addressed that. Festival space versus performance space. We love our performance space, but we've got two festivals on the calendar before the end of the year. We have festival space. I do not believe that an amphitheater in the corner of Grundy Street and, and Jackson Street will help be a nice festival space. I can talk loud, I don't need it. Surrounding businesses and economic spend versus none, I agree. And I believe that we should take the opportunity to look at what we have and how we can develop that into what could be something very usable for the future and could be something very beneficial to us. I believe that the space around the original town square where South Jackson sits has some really great opportunity for development, that being housing as well as retail. And there has been a conversation had with some of our city officials and myself and some others that have been involved in this conversation of, of a Greenway space from downtown to the arts district with the Fine Arts Center and South Jackson. And that space could be a multitude of things, but maybe coming off of, of Wall Street. These things were mentioned in the stakeholders meeting. That was the only meeting that I was invited to attend, and others I was not able to attend that maybe I could have attended. But that, that's, that's a great idea, and I think a great use of, of connecting downtown to downtown. South Jackson is not separate from downtown Tullahoma. It's just two blocks away. And it is still a part of the downtown and can be a very vital part of the downtown if we have a plan in place that would address the needs that we have in order to make that happen. You know, we already, I don't really think that, how, how we're going to maintain a downtown amphitheater, because I don't believe that the city is looking for another space to keep up and invest in. I don't think that it's a city thing. So how long would a private investor want to upkeep something that is used by the public as the plan would suggest that we would use it and be a, a meeting space, a congregating space? The maintenance that is necessary and the care that's necessary for that, how, how long will a private investor really be interested in doing that? We have trouble taking care of our planters downtown in the current trees that we're trying to plant. I, I don't think that we necessarily have looked at a plan of how that's going to take place and how that would be usable and how that would be kept. Again, would love to have been a part of this conversation from the beginning, and if there's some private investors that you need to send my way, send them. We can talk about that. There's been an amphitheater plan at South Jackson for a long time, and some of you who have been around know that that was a plan. There's been some conversation about a covered pavilion for our farmer's market and the idea that we could make that covered pavilion into something more that could be an amphitheater. And so there, there's a lot of opportunity there, and we could spend our time and efforts trying to connect the two instead of, instead of building something more. I don't really know that we do have the current community to support multiple things. I'll give you an example. Parks and Rec had a free concert in the park with a Journey tribute band. On the same weekend that South Jackson had a show, that night, the show suffered because you can't compete with free. And I don't know that a downtown amphitheater would necessarily be free, but it's really hard to compete with free. And that, you know, you had two options in town, the free option was the one that was taken. And, and there's, there's, there's still plenty of that going on, and we, you know, we encourage the, the, the concerts and the different things. There was just one this past weekend when we had an Invaders concert at South Jackson. There was a benefit concert out at the Fund Center. And that's, that's great, and it was, it was wonderful, but those things still suffer. We're a nonprofit that's trying to, and I believe doing a very good job at, providing quality of life for our community. And so just would like for you to take those kinds of things into account as you're addressing this and the relook at this plan. I agree with the idea that a mixed-use areas, I, I agree with that. I think that could happen. I think we've got some great spots where that can happen already instead of on the outskirts of town. Why can't we look at what we have and how we can improve those areas for a better Tullahoma and a better tomorrow?
Thank you, Mr. Gressel.
Just a brief, just briefly, we, we think the South Jackson Civic Center is a great space, but we think what we're proposing for downtown is a totally different kind of space for different uses, and they can both, you know, coexist well. And the, the thing about this new space, keep in mind, people judge a community by its downtown, whether you like that or not, people really do. That's the one unique spot. It's not the suburban generic development. It's really the identity is your downtown. Your downtown right now is not very vibrant. We've worked on so many downtown plans where we come up with a, a public space, if a downtown's missing that. After, when they implement the plan, they create the space, we've seen so many communities completely turn their downtown around all because of a public space. And so they're really important. You also need to have it within comfortable walking distance of businesses. That's how you get economic spinoff. If you put it somewhere where you don't have a restaurant within a block, it's not going to leverage anything, because people just get in their car and they go back home or somewhere else. So that, that's really important to have. And yes, you know, the city would have to fund the maintenance and the construction, but it's just like a city that has a convention center, they don't make money. It's about economic development. It's the same thing. Think of these public spaces, like what we're recommending, as an economic engine that helps revitalize the balance of your downtown.
Next up is going to be Marvin Sellers, Chuck Dean, George Wilson. Marvin Sellers, please.
Just want to go ahead and grab it so I can lean over. My name's Marvin Sellers. I live at 207 Terra Boulevard here in Tullahoma. And I have several things I want to talk to you about. I wanted to get the slides brought up on the TNN option. I made many, my main concern with the Tullahoma 24 Plan that I addressed during previous meetings, one of the primary ones was the designation of the TNN optional, which is really, as it was originally specified, is designed as an urban density definition, right? I mean, it was in the urban dense, the original urban density.
It's a default.
Right. I understand. But it wa, it was laid out in the plan under the urban density, and then said it was going to move, move it to the suburban, but the density didn't change. So have you got that? Okay, thank you. The, the thing was, is that, you know, the allowable density is up to 20 units per acre, and I know it was revised to that would be just portions of the acreage, you know, like maybe, what was it, Greg? Was it 10 or 20%? 20% high density. But still, that's 20 units per acre of 20, 20% of the acreage. And that is in, being located in areas that are, are one residential low density. The, the other, well, actually, I wanted to go back to your plot, but we'll look at this for a second. The orange areas there where you had picked out are the large acreage areas. I was also wanting to see that plot, the, the street layout, how you designed TNN option. You'll notice that orange area is not very far out from the city of Tullahoma. Okay? It was, it was one of your slides that showed the layout of streets. Keep going up, I think it, yeah, that, that one there. Yep. So I understand the idea behind this is, you know, you just want to have it where you have houses mixed in with shops and work and such. That works great for areas like Franklin and Nashville and Nolansville and these other areas, no Murphys Burrows, that alike a lot, because in those areas, if you want to go from your house to go get something to store, it may take you 10 minutes to get across to it. You can go across town in 10 minutes in Tullahoma, from one place to the other. So we've had, we, I know one of the areas that was designated, the Anderson Farm, was, is, we talked about this, I talked with Mary about it, you know, we, we thought you could do high density down towards the East Lincoln side and then low density towards the top to make it the compatible. Well, the, just on that area near where the, the high residential area is, there used to be a store there that people could go to that lived in that area. It went out of business. So I don't, you know, this, you got to think that Tullahoma is not like these large areas, that it takes a long time to get to the store. Anywhere in Tullahoma, you can get the Publix or Walmart, and they're going to go there before they go to this little local market in this little subdivision. So the concept that's, that's put in here about the TNN optional areas, and now I think it's been revised since this, that all of the orange areas are now polka dot, and all the polka dot is now TNN optional. That's everywhere around Tullahoma. That is saying we have the option to put high density out there, and the people of Tullahoma are really, don't want that. We want to keep the same Tullahoma we have, which is, if you go back to the plot, the picture that had the, the sub cul-de-sac, we have lots of subdivisions that have cul-de-sacs. And I understand where you say that, that's not, it requires driving. If you go, yeah, okay. That's not the, quite, yeah, that's it, okay. The reason we like, like those neighborhoods is we can get out and walk in those neighborhoods. We don't mind, if we want to go to the store, we'll get out and we'll go to the store. That's the way a lot of the people in Tullahoma think. Now, that's, that's not the way everybody, all the areas are. I know there was a need, they said, the people stated, there's a need for high-density areas, and I agree with that. But I think that the high-density areas should be located closer to the city center, not in that big outer ring of Tullahoma that we had the polka dots, because those people are going to just drive into, into town. I spoke with Mary and provided her with a, a number of lots that I had looked at across Tullahoma, and it was several hundred acres, and I know some of the hundred acres was not buildable, but there were several hundred acres in, closer to town that could be built on, next to existing R2 and R3. And yet the builders have not elected to do that. So why is that? I don't know why that is. Most of the land that I gave her were by builders that owned those, those properties. So I'm not saying, I'm not trying to be a naysayer that don't build in my backyard, but there are areas that are better suited for high density to get the walkability that you're looking for by doing it in closer to town. Now, I actually would like to see the zoning regulations more strict in the suburban areas than they currently are or are being proposed, so that we cease to see developments like Emerald Meadows, the area between Rock Creek and Avoca. That's, I mean, they're nice houses and everything, but that is what we, most people, if you ask them to live around it, that's not what they wanted around their houses. They don't want house, 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 house. They want to have areas of acreage or whatever to live around and walk around and say hi to your neighbor when you want to, or not have to be bothered by them. But the, you know, the wording that we have in our current comprehensive plan really is not any, if we were to do all R1 in ours, Anderson Farm, it wouldn't be much different density-wise, like you say, than the TNN optional. But that's really why I think we shouldn't have, we don't want Emerald Meadows back in the back of Terra, in between Brookfield and Macon. That's not what we want here in Tullahoma. That is why I say that the zoning regulations should be more strict than what they are. We ought to have a couple of other areas of definition. Now, what, one of the things I would say, okay, how would I word that? And I was thinking about this, that you could word it such that it's R1 zoning, but the minimum lot size, if you're adjacent to an existing subdivision, needs to be the same as that lot size on the existing. And then as you move in away from it, it can be more dense. But anywhere on the boundary, if you're next to a lot that's three, a third or two-thirds of an acre, then that's what it should be on the inside against on the new subdivision. So that's the kind of thing I think we should try to add to our zoning requirements, so that it's laid out for the builders, this is the requirements. And again, the proposed zoning thing that we're putting in the 2040 Plan is what the requirement's going to be based on. So I think we need to work on that and improve that, so it's clear and laid out where I think everybody would be happier. I also think that, you know, the, the commission needs to be working for the people of Tullahoma. You guys are the planning commission for Tullahoma, you should be working to do what the Tullahoma residents want, not what outside developers want, okay? Okay, I know you're not, that you live here, so you want to have, you want to have here what you, what we want, but I just want to make sure and emphasize that we should be working to the require, the desire and vision for the Tallahomans. Can you go to the street map for a second, please? The, yeah, this is a good one right here. So the plan has some really nice looking simulations, and well, these are actually real houses and pictures, has trees along the streets and some of the streets have trees in the middle. And I was thinking about this today, that they look great now, but what's it going to be in 15 to 20 years? I remember just a few years ago, well, it's probably been longer than I thought, but probably 10 years ago, we had a lot of trees around Tallahoma downtown. And a lot of them had to be taken down and the sidewalks had to be redone because the roots were coming up and breaking up the sidewalks. I guess you guys remember that, right? So even though this is nice and pretty, we've got to think about the future. When this stuff grows up, what's going to happen? Then lastly, this plan, I think, it's already been mentioned, I think it has, has lacked sufficient financial impacts, you know, on schools, utilities, police, fire, et cetera, for the proposed changes that we're talking about. You know, you guys weren't tasked with it, but I think this is something we should do. It's very important to every resident because we're going to be the ones that's going to have to pay for it. Once these impacts have been documented, I think the city should impose some type of levy on the builders of these large developments. And you can't do it on somebody's building two or three houses, but I mean, when we have these large developments on several hundred acres, there should be a levy that's laid out that will offset some of the impact to the infrastructure that we're going to have. And that money should be set aside and protected, not where somebody can use it for something else, but it should be designated only to be used to help with the schools, utilities, fire departments, whatever other infrastructure is. Mainly because, you know, these big builders are going to come here, they're going to make the profit and they're going to be, we're going to be left holding the bag. So I, I think we should change our zoning regulations. And also look at this, I don't know, what was it called, the impact fee? Impact fee should be looked at seriously, but in order to do that, we need the financial analysis. And I like the, I like the roads, they're pretty, but I, I think that we could run into a lot of issues down the road with some of those proposed designs. Thank you.
I guess while we're waiting for the next person, I mean, I can't imagine a downtown street without street trees. I mean, it's all a matter of having the right species, installing them correctly. But if you can picture any nice historic downtown you visited, they probably all had street trees, right? So I guess that would be my main point.
I'm just going to say a couple of things here and try to make it through this echo. So first of all, I think it's a misnomer to say that you can't have a traditional neighborhood pattern in Tallahoma, that that can only happen in Franklin or Nashville or Murfreesboro. Your downtown and the great streets around your downtown are a traditional neighborhood. Okay? One of the things that the traditional neighborhood movement came out of was the pushback from communities of saying, we understand that someone might want to live in a townhouse, or we understand that someone might want to, you know, they're fresh out of school and they're going to get an apartment because they can't afford a house yet and so forth. And the only option is a giant apartment complex or a giant townhouse complex. Or we think about the people that move into a neighborhood where all the houses are the same, and if they want to move up or move down, they have to go somewhere else. Or like we all in the twilight of our lives, we downsize and we end up having to go to a facility. And so part of the, the reasoning behind this resurgence in, in correctly mixing these things together is so that we could get back to what we had in downtown Tallahoma, in downtown Franklin, in downtown Nashville even, at different scales, right? Because they're different community sizes. So I just think it's important to keep in mind that if there is demand for, let's say, townhouses or apartments in this community, and there is no option to do that as part of a collective cohesive master planned community, regardless of where it is, we can debate that all night long, but to not have that as an option, is to not have that as an option means that it forces when that growth comes only into that one model. And that's all I just want to say, to, to keep that in mind.
I'm going to risk a 15 yard penalty for piling on, but just to add to what Keith said, you know, when you have a mixed use area and smaller housing units close together, you can add the independent living of an older person, maybe 10 years before they have to be warehoused away somewhere, because right now people are only viable for as long as they can drive, right? And so what a lot of people have found is moving to this kind of development, you can downsize, you can walk two blocks to a small grocery store on a fairly daily basis. You really can add independent living years to a lot of people's lives.
Okay, we have Chuck.
Chuck.
Chuck Dean.
Yeah, Chuck Dean, 419 Alamo Merrill Drive. And I appreciate the Walker Collaborative being here. I would piggyback on what Marvin had to say there a bit with the gross density and the comparable, you know, being compatible. I think it needs to be extended to not just the compatibility of the density issue, but the compatibility of the surrounding neighborhoods. Those being lot sizes, home sizes, you know, there's a compatibility factor there that I think needs to be taken into consideration. But really what I wanted to kind of do is kind of state a recap of this process. You know, the city, the plan was put in writing by the Walker Group Collaborative and the city got it. The city put it up for review by the citizens. The citizens had a chance to comment. The comments were then taken to the steering committee, they were taken to the planning commission, they were redlined by these bodies, and then they were shipped off by the planning commission to BOMA to approve the plan was. All during this process, or as part of this process, the, you know, the statements that were made about the plan that were listed on the website had a lot of concerns and criticisms, constructive criticisms. And then, once again, it was sent to BOMA to actually pass. Well, as we all know, that meeting where it was supposed to, you know, be recommended to pass by BOMA from the planning commission, there was another stink. And there was additional concerns brought up by the public. So subsequently, we had four open house meetings. I attended three of those. I thought they were very good, they went off very well. There were a lot of comments made. I appreciate Jennifer and Mary taking the time to do those. I believe that they did listen. I think there was a lot of, you know, a lot of communication there. I know several people that are here tonight made statements and comments and asked questions. So that was, that was good. Once again, a lot of the statements that were made, I know they passed out sheets to be filled out and some people like myself just sending some typed comments and those were all posted as well. So, and then tonight you've had more comments. So this kind of brings me to my question overall to both the planning commission members and BOMA members. What are you going to do with it? Are you going to, I know you'll take it seriously, but will you look at all of these comments and concerns in depth and consider maybe some heavy changes in this plan? Maybe abandoning this plan? Or are you simply going to just approve it as is? I think that's a concern. I would like to see comments on this when you have the, the board member open discussion. And so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Let me go ahead and make a comment to that. Yeah. So yeah, Chuck, I've got, I've got the full stack of all the comments here from those four meetings, 148 pages or so and some email copies. So yeah, over, over the next few weeks and months, the planning commission will go through all these comments and group them. And there's lots of duplicates, right? And they'll all be addressed, they'll all be incorporated in some capacity. There's, I mean, there's opposing views, right? So you're never going to make everybody happy with this plan, but we're going to do our best to, to draft it in a way that will make the most people happy.
I hear a lot of, this is what, this is what Tallahoma wants, or this is what Tallahoma doesn't want. I think it's important to remember that the 85 people in here, while everybody's opinion is important, there are still another 19,000 people out there and their opinions are equally as important as everyone else's. And just because we didn't specifically address a comment or specifically make a specific change that you wanted, doesn't mean we didn't listen. It could mean that there was 200 other people who disagreed. And I think our job is to find balance and the middle ground between everybody, all 20,000 people out there. There's things in this plan that I would love to see and things that I would love to see here in Tallahoma, but I know a lot of people probably be against. So not, I live here too. We drive these roads. I grew up here. So this is, you know, this is our town too. But I think that that's important to remember is that we're all, there's 20,000 of us that are Tallahoma and the best that we can do sitting up here is to find the middle ground and the balance.
Hold on, Paul Walker.
Okay, I'm kind of loud. So I think what I keep hearing, I have some reservations about the Walker Collaborative and the work, just simply because your, your field of expertise does seem to be that of progressive urbanization, I guess I would, I would put it. And I feel that what I'm hearing from the citizens of Tallahoma is that a lot of this progressive urbanization is somewhat unsolicited. And when you come back to the podium, when you are addressing a comment from a citizen, we say, you say, well, we think you're wrong and here's why. And I think that that's what the citizens are hearing and they want to, they want to be heard. And then the other thing is there's somewhat of a little bit of an oxymoron with the comp plan and that it's a comprehensive plan, but on several occasions tonight, I've heard you say, well, that's outside the scope. Well, how can you have a comprehensive plan and then these imperative studies that should be done are outside the scope? You know, fiscal impact analyses must be tailored towards Tallahoma in order to mimic the traditional southern charm and the effervescence of that small town feel that we want to hold on to and that, as you can tell, you know, we are so protective of our arts and our arts are part of the downtown. We don't want to hear anything other than that. And so I think it's necessary to have a good understanding of who Tallahoma is and what people are trying to hold on to while still growing responsibly. So we need to limit the unsolicited progressive urbanization.
Takes, oh, there we go, you're right. Just needs to wake up. Regarding the scope and how comprehensive the plan was, first of all, when we're hired to do a plan, it's fixed fee, fixed expenses. So because of that, we write a scope that's four, five pages in length and has a whole lot of detail. We say exactly what we're going to do and for things that we're not going to do, that's one reason we have optional services, to make it clear that, for example, if you want to pay us more money, we'll do a fiscal impact analysis. And again, the city passed on that and they're trying to be conservative with taxpayer dollars. I totally get that. They did follow through with the housing market analysis, with the venue, you know, venue analysis. So when, when we, we call it comprehensive and it is as far as addressing a whole lot of different issues, but there's a limit to it and we did exactly what was in our scope, what the city agreed with. So I just want to make that part really clear. Back on the progressive stuff, I mean, our thinking is clearly in tune with smart growth. Okay, that's something Keith explained a little bit of that, came out of the 80s. It's, it's something where we've made so many mistakes in the 50s and 60s with all these segregated land uses and driving everywhere and there's huge, if you're concerned about fiscal situations, that's way more expensive to try to sustain than small walkable mixed use areas. So you can call it, you know, progressive. I'm kind of flattered by that actually, but I think our thinking, I know you interviewed other teams for this project and I doubt we were way out of step with most of the other firms in that regard.
Thank you. Next.
George Wilson, Maury Burke, and then Scott Van Vessler. George Wilson.
First, I would like to talk on a few, touch on a few things that have already been discussed. First, I'd like to thank the city attorney for asking the attorney general about a specific ruling about what type of plan this is. What type of plan this is actually does make a significant difference. Under Tennessee Code 134201, you make a general plan. Under Tennessee Code 6-58104, you make a growth plan. The legal requirements and legal restrictions of those two plans are significantly different. The, the question is, as it was referred to earlier, a general plan or a comprehensive plan can actually be a living document. It can be actively manipulated, amended in a very short and easy process. Growth plans cannot. In order to try to create some, or eliminate some of the confusion that the, that the state created on its own, in the most recent code, they tried to explain part of this. So what I want to read, and it will be great to see what the attorney general has to say about it. So what the Tennessee Code says is after the adoption of the general plan by a legislative body, any land use decisions thereafter made by that legislative body, the respective planning commission or board of zoning appeals, when the board of zoning appeals is exercising its power, must be consistent with the plan. The general plan may be adopted as an element of the jurisdiction's growth plan through the process established in Title VI, Chapter 58. But if the general plan is not adopted as part of the growth plan, it nevertheless cannot be inconsistent with the growth plan or the intent of Title VI, Chapter 58. So the issue for the attorney general is how do you comply with intent? What does that mean? Because under the restrictions from the attorney general with a growth plan, a growth plan is set in stone for the first three years. You cannot amend a growth plan until three years after it's in, after it's enacted. You can alter and modify general plans or comprehensive plans, but I'm not sure how you comply with intent when your ability to manipulate and manage these plans is so different. All right. The next thing that I would like to talk about is the place types. So as all of you probably know, and I'm sure all of y'all know, the city of Tallahoma basically has three kind of guiding documents. It has the, this. The zoning ordinance basically defines what you can build, commercial, residential, et cetera, and where you can build it. The other thing that we have currently is called a subdivision regulation for the city of Telahoma. So, basically, this document tells you how you have to build it. This is where all the things that we are currently familiar with reside. So, in that document, there is a table called TZ1. It's called Area and Yard. This defines the current zoning standards, R1, C1, et cetera. Under this particular document, there are specific limitations, there are specific minimum requirements, but under almost all of these regulations, there are no maximums. For example, R1, single-family dwelling, with public sewer, minimum lot area is 12,000 square feet, approximately a quarter of an acre. Without public sewer, 20,000 square feet. But this is a minimum lot area, not a maximum lot area. Under the current zoning, you can vary R1. There is, in fact, an access to it called R1A, which is also single-family dwelling, which is a minimum of two acres. So, under R1 alone, you have the ability, the current, the city currently has the ability to have R1 that is anywhere from a quarter of an acre to over two acres, all based on the current zoning. Okay? The same type of thing applies to C and to the commercial and industrial. One of the things that has come up in this whole discussion is PUDs and mixed-use areas. We actually have C3. In the document, y'all talk about the fact that there is no C3. That's not true. There is C3. There's just very little of it. So, I guess the big issue that I have in this whole process is, under the, the comprehensive plan replaces the current zoning that we have with place types. In the document says that place types are, quote, "a substantial improvement other than those earlier approaches." Okay? The plan specifically states the new zoning provisions will be implemented that, I'm sorry, states that new zoning provisions will have to be implemented to adopt and apply the place types, and that is a part of the major aspect of year one in the procedure. So, in one of the previous meetings, I was talking to Mary Samnago about how these documents work and trying to have more of a layman's understanding of what that subdivision code requires. So, the question that I asked was, can you use that document for the city as a whole, like a community, like Macon Manor, for instance, would use its HOA? Can you take that document and say, "In this place, you have to build this thing," not just minimum lot size, but architectural sizes, how it orients, the driveways can't face the street, a variety of other things? And basically, the answer to that question is yes. So, the things that currently exist allow us to define the size of lots. It allows us to define architecture of building, and it allows us to define every other aspect of what is being developed, residential or commercial. So, my question is, why would we abandon something that has the ability to provide everything that we need for any of this construction and adopt something called place types, which has no specificity whatsoever, and would require us to back up, start over, and define exactly the things that currently exist into the place types, which don't currently exist here?
Okay. First of all, I just checked, and we do acknowledge the existence of the C3 zone, okay? So, it's like, we don't disregard it. It's in there. I didn't see that language, but maybe, maybe it is. You'll have to find it for me. And what we're talking about are apples and oranges. This is a plan. Plans are, you implement plans with zoning and subdivision regs and all that. So, the existing zoning isn't relevant right now. We're doing a plan. You would then change all your zoning and subregs and all that to implement the plan. So, that's how it works. It's not like you would regulate development based on the comprehensive plan. You're right, there aren't all the details of what you have now, because what you have now are development regulations. What you would do is, if you adopt the plan, is you would revise those to implement the plan. So, it's very different what a plan does versus zoning and subdivision regs.
Can you explain it for the, for the, not you, Mary, Ms. Samnago?
Okay.
I do what said, from the explanation. She explained the explanation.
Am I on? Okay. Thank you. Mary Samnago. I think one way, I'll use an analogy, one way that I've tried to explain it to other residents, the difference between the plan and the zoning ordinance. The plan, let's use the analogy, we're building a house. So, you go to an architect, you say, "I wanna build a new house," and the architect goes, "What kind of a house? Do you want an adobe house? Do you want a Victorian house? Do you want a colonial house? Do you want a ranch house?" And so, the comprehensive plan is kind of at that stage. What type of a house do you wanna build? What type of a community are we trying to build here? So, we're working out, okay, well, we want, you know, the first floor to look Victorian, but the second floor to look adobe, and so, we're coming up kind of with a general drawing, okay? Stay with me. And then, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision control ordinance are the blueprints of, okay, what size actual windows do we need to fit into our Victorian house we're building? What type of door typically goes into a Victorian house? So, the blueprints are the actual construction drawings to make the house that you designed. So, a comprehensive plan is kind of the guiding document, the broad strokes, the general idea of how we want the city to grow, and then it's actually implemented through the law, which is the zoning regulations and the subdivision control regulations. So, as an example, if you wanted, as an example, the R1, the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. If you wanted areas that are budding terror states, Macon Manor, to have larger lots, say, one-acre minimum lot sizes, minimum, then you would revise your zoning code regulations for, say, the R1A, and say, okay, R1A should be in these areas, and the minimum lot size would be one acre. So, that implements the vision from the plan, but you have to always start with the plan. The plan is kind of the broad strokes, the general concepts that you're trying to achieve, and then you implement them, or you create the design through the regulations. So, first, we have to start with kind of what the general ideas are. And again, kind of what you were saying, Dr. Wilson, I'll hand the mic to you. If you want larger lots in certain areas of town, then it should be in the plan, and the place type should be, okay, low-density residential. Right now, it said, I think the consultants came back with a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size on average. That could be increased to one acre. You could increase it to two acres. And then, if you did that, if it's in the place types map, we want these areas to have an average density of acre lots. Then, we adopt the plan, and then, once we have those place types, then we would go back to amendment to the zoning regulations and create a new zone where there's one-acre minimum lot sizes.
So, one of the things that has come up.
One of the things in this was a reference to TNN and the requirements under TNN for, you know, for the architectural structure demands, requirements, whatever you wanna say. So, basically, what you're telling me, so that was part of the reason that we would use TNN. But if, why are we using TNN? Why are we using a different designation for something that already exists? I guess that's the confusion.
So, a different designation, like, right now, you don't have a TNN option. You've got your historic downtown. You've got older neighborhoods that are like the original TNN, but right now, it's not an option. Maybe because you haven't done a plan in a while. I mean, 'cause TNNs, as Keith was talking about, you know, it's kind of a reaction to the '50s, '60s, '70s way of planning, when people realize this isn't a real high-quality life, and there are better ways to do it, like we used to do before the car took over, roughly starting World War II and since. So, apparently, whenever you did your last plan, they just didn't, either wasn't on the radar screen or whatever. And I'm trying to remember, when was the last plan done? Okay.
Thank you. Next.
Maureen Burke. And as she's walking up, just to clarify, yeah, the last plan that we're currently under is 2012, and it's really just basically Euclidean, where there's, commercial is only in this area, resident, single-family residential is only in this area, industrial is only in this area. So, that's just how the current plan was laid out. There is no mixed uses. The first mixed uses concept came with the adoption of the C3 zoning district.
May I clarify, there currently is no, so, any architectural requirements, correct? So, that does not currently exist? We would create a new, this plan.
All right. I'm Maureen Burke, and I have a couple comments. I'm, hopefully, I can sort through this, but the plan was initially presented to us as our vision board, our idea board, the residents of Telahoma. And by the way, on the numbers that support this kind of pushback on the plan, it's more like 1,100. There's not everybody here, but we have a large group of people who are in agreement with a lot of the comments and concerns that have been addressed tonight. So, that's about as many as you had for your survey. So, I just wanna make that clear. But anyway, this plan was presented to us as our plan, okay? Our vision for Telahoma, the residents who live here and pay taxes and wanna keep living here. So, one of the, I mean, the plan that you all put together is wonderful. It's a beautiful plan with lots of nice pictures, and it's great for a lot of places, but it just doesn't seem to match what it is that we want. And what we've talked about is a nice downtown, which I appreciate that in the plan, there's some good things, tying together the Greenway, you know, making our town a unique place to live and to pull out those, the things that we have here and make it even better. I think by putting Plan Unit Developments around town, you actually take away from the downtown. We don't wanna pull things outside from the downtown. We wanna bring things to the downtown. So, that's a perfect place for the high-density housing. One of the things that I would like to know, well, I would like to know because you all represent us as the citizens of Telahoma, and I would like to know a show of hands on how many here are concerned about out-of-control, high-density housing. I don't know how else to say it, but who's concerned about that? Okay? That's good. I mean, I'd like to know that we're represented here, because that's one of our biggest concerns, is an overabundance of housing, cheap housing, low quality. We don't want more Emerald Meadows and Riley Creek houses that spill out onto the main road, and Estle Springs houses that are packed one against the other, that are all look the same. That's the concern here. Not that we don't need it, but we want it to be good. So, what, if I could ask, what mechanism do you offer to the citizens to ensure that we're not going to get those kinds of houses that are packed in together next to neighborhoods that have, you know, third acre to a quarter acre, half acre lots with 1,800 to 2,000 square foot houses? I mean, what mechanism is available to us as citizens to make sure that doesn't happen?
The City goes there and talks to all the different agencies. It goes to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has the public hearing. The Planning Commission discusses it. They approve it. It goes to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, where you have another public hearing. And then, just for the rezone, if there's a rezone, and then the Board of Mayor and Alderman has to vote on it twice, number four engagement possible there. Then, once they decide how they wanna subdivide those lots, like we saw tonight, then there's another public hearing, and it goes through Planning and Commission again, or Planning Department again. There's a public hearing at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, either approved or denied. In tonight's case, they denied, right? Then, if it had approved, then it would go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman again, and there'd be a public hearing there, which is not a case. If it's not, it would be out of consideration, vote for, and public hearings, exactly that, public hearings. Actually, no, sometimes we don't go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Some of it is what's not, like, so, there's, there's a preliminary, and a final. So, there's a giant process. Maybe that's something that you need to do, is maybe kind of a trucker's hat version of, this is the process from start to finish to get to. And I know it's been a fairy all the time, but maybe it's simplified, but it goes to the public. Here's all the points, but it's, the public gets involved.
So, that would be great, and more transparency, more meetings like this, so that the citizens can get involved. I think it's hard right now to find out information. So, the other thing is, the place types, it's confusing, and that is gonna be the master plan, we hear, and everything's gonna roll down from there. You know, I think that, like I said, it's a nicely put-together plan. I just don't think it's the plan that should be adopted for Telahoma.
Thank you. Next up is Scott Van Vessler.
I, uh, I really like experts. Sorry. I really like experts, and holy smokes, I'm in a rock concert right now. But are you talking about biting off mobility? You were talking about modality there?
No, I'm not.
Or somebody in your crew is doing that? If y'all can imagine a box of matchbook cars in a box that all of a sudden came alive, that's what Nolansville is. So, we're punching way above our weight, having you guys work on our stuff in town, and I appreciate that.
And again, I'm not working on.
Okay. Somebody you know, or is at least as smart as you, is doing that. And there was a couple of things I wanted to ask, since Franklin was mentioned specifically. How's Franklin doing? How's the property value there?
How's Franklin doing, some questions?
Yeah. How are those neighborhoods doing? The, you know, the mixed-use neighborhoods in Franklin? Increased property value, beautiful spaces, probably one of the most desirable cities in the state. I mean, 1.2 million's kinda crazy, but to me, that indicates property value increase versus decrease with these types of developments. That's a point that I would like to make. And I need to swallow this thing, I guess. There was another point that I think is really important in this discussion that involves personal property rights and private investment. I really appreciated the fact that that was pointed out, because when we're talking about, instead of Anderson Farms moving it out to Highway 55 so that it won't impact our neighborhood, you're talking about a completely different property owner, you're talking about a completely different investment strategy, and just a totally different way of socially engineering somebody else's property, which I don't think is a smart idea. The, oh, yeah, I'm on my wrong page here. And I'm last, so I'm gonna try and wrap this up quick, 'cause my legs are falling asleep already. But I really, I guess this is the last public meeting that we're gonna have with both of y'all here, and not necessarily, actually, I did hear a couple of months mentioned, but there is a very real need for these higher-density communities in Telahoma, and I really want to see a more rational approach when it comes to personal property rights, including somebody from New York who has bought property in Telahoma, because I definitely encourage them to do that whenever we can.
Thank you.
No, I've got about 15 more.
Oh, okay, we have more. Okay. First of all, thank you.
We have six. It's over. Let's call that.
But I really, I guess this is the last public meeting that we're going to have with both of y'all here, and not necessarily, actually, I did hear "a couple of months" mentioned, but there is a very real need for these higher-density communities in Tullahoma, and I really want to see a more rational approach when it comes to personal property rights, including somebody from New York who has bought property in Tullahoma, because I definitely encourage them to do that whenever we can.
Thank you.
No, I've got about 15 more.
Oh, okay, we have more, okay. First of all, thank you.
We have six.
Let's call that quits, huh?
Is there anyone else who'd like to address this with comments tonight? If not, if you would allow the boards... We're going to, we are going to conduct our board meetings now, and that will not be open to discussion. We've been listening, and we would, do you have anything else to add? Any comments?
We forwarded to the board with a favorable recommendation. We forwarded to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with a favorable recommendation. They rejected it, and it's come back to the Planning Commission for review and edit, based on comments. No, there's no need to resend. It's been sent back to us with a note, so we have to revise it and send it back to them after discussion and after looking at all these comments. There's no need to resend that prior decision.
Okay, thank everyone for participating in the comments tonight. This time, we will conduct our business with the board tonight, and that will include some discussion, limited, I hope. But I would like to give everyone an opportunity to respond to the comments that we've heard tonight. And if you would, you might care to let the Planning Commission go first, any comments that come from the Planning Commission?
First up, it's been, my own. Can you guys hear me? Okay. It's been a long night, you know, we had a meeting here before here, but I appreciate everyone's inputs and stuff like that. Took some notes and things throughout the thing, I still got to digest stuff, and I've definitely reviewed all the public comments that was submitted via email, or not email, but in the public forum. I apologize that I had to be out of town for the sessions themselves, and I couldn't attend, so sorry about that. In general, I'll just kind of add on to, what we kept talking about was this TNN, and the main thing about that is connectivity. There was a comment about the fire codes, stuff like that. The more connected our community is, the easier it is to get around, the easier it is to walk around, easier it is to ride a bike around, easier it is to get to the store and to do all your business. I was just commenting to my wife the other night about that I do the most ridiculous thing, Monday through Friday, where I follow roughly the same guy to work every day for 15 minutes, follow the same guy home 15 minutes. And it would be really nice if we could have like a park-and-ride in the Arnold Air Force Base, but get around and get some public transportation where I can not have to drive. Not owning a car would be a wonderful thing for anybody. It's a tremendous expense. I know it's a tremendous expense to the, to the, to the underserved community. There's a food desert over there, and they're kind of close to the area that we were talking about for the one TNN. I'd like to see all that get addressed. I know there's a lot of people that came here and spoke about this, probably unpopular comments from my end, but those are things that I think would be, would make us a stronger Tullahoma, and those are the things that I'm going to continue to pursue in this chair. So, thank you.
Seems to me like is that, the way everything's set up currently, any of the zoning issues people currently have, you can voice your opinion. The only issue is the disconnect between knowing what's up for rezoning. Like today, we voted on some rezoning. The issue is, people might not know that it's up for rezoning, it gets rezoned, and then everybody freaks out after the fact. So the way it's currently set up is that you have to pay attention to what's on the docket for rezoning, and when it is up, open for public comment, you come and you make your public comment, you let us know that, how you feel about whatever the change might be. And then going forward, what sounds like's being proposed is that, you know, it's a possibility that you can, we might relook at the way zoning codes are set up. They're set up a certain way now, it could be a certain way in the future, to where you can do more architectural restraints or whatever. But that's all up kind of for discussion right now. None of it's being changed right now. This plan got approved, which I'm not saying I'm for the plan as of right now, it's not changing any of the zoning regulations you have. So this is kind of all up for debate, best I'm understanding. I'm new to the board, this is my first meeting, but it takes more community involvement the way it's set up right now, and maybe it should be advertised to the community better so that you can come in front of the zoning board and voice your opinion. And that involvement is really the key to getting what you want when it comes to the zoning of Tullahoma. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong.
Any other comments from commissioners? I've got a couple of things. Yeah, the purpose of this plan was just to lay the groundwork for slow and steady growth. The plan calls for 1% to 2% growth, and that slowness of growth would allow plenty of time for any of the police, fire, ambulance needs, infrastructure needs. It's not, we're not just going to go out and build huge subdivisions, you know, in no time. Also, you know, all this development occurs on privately-owned land. You've got private developers who are risking their money, they're taking a huge risk of that investment, and, you know, profit's a good thing, they've got to turn a profit. They've got to be incentivized to do that. But they are taking the risk on themselves. You know, and where we are now, you know, the BMA has sent it back to the Planning Commission for revision. We're going to, well, my plan is to go through all these comments and really put all the light comments together and kind of rack and stack, like what are the biggest issues that have been responded to, both in written form and then tonight? And that'll give us a sense of what the real temperature of the community is. So that's where we're going next, and everything's going to be public. You know, we meet the third Friday of every month, I'm sorry, third Monday, third Monday, 4:30 at City Hall. So everything's public, it's also always televised, if you want to stay home and watch it. But that's the way forward. You know, it's going to, it's not, this is not going to happen overnight, we've got weeks, months to work through this and get everybody comfortable with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. With our Board of Mayor and Alderman. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Well, my name is Bill Comer, and I used to be chairman of the Coffey County Industrial Board for about 15 years. During that time, we worked really hard to try to get some good jobs for people in Tullahoma as well as all of Coffey County. That's really something that's hard to do. The two things that we got asked the most is, if we come to Tullahoma or Coffey County, where are we going to get our workers? And the second question is, if we bring them in from the outside, do you have housing for them to live in? And you have to, and the third thing was, do you have a comprehensive plan that supports your answers? And many times, we tried to show them a lot of the subdivisions in Tullahoma that have been mentioned tonight, because we thought those would be very attractive to try to convince those industries to come to town. But my concern, more so, I don't want to be another Murfreesboro or another Franklin either, but my concern is thus not being some of these towns that I won't mention their names that I'm aware of, that are dying on the vine. And there's some things that's happened in this area in the last few years that kind of lead in that direction. Think about some of the industries that have left. Worth, Wilson, Fuji, Goodyear, Goodrich, rather, Land and Gear, and there's two or three others that don't come to my mind right now. Those, and the other thing is AEDC downsizing. AEDC is, right now, got about 2,000 employees. They once had nearly 5,000. And some of the trends in Washington today are to de-emphasize the military in general, and there's other emphasis to de-emphasize ground testing in favor of computer-based testing. So there's some concerns that I have about Tullahoma going the other direction. So I think we need to focus on growth to prevent us from going in the direction that we don't want to go in. We all want to keep Tullahoma like it is today. I love Tullahoma, I came here out of college because I was looking for an aerospace job in a small town, and AEDC in Tullahoma exactly met that requirement. And I liked it then, and I like it now, and I tend to like it some more if I'm granted by our good Lord another few years. But I'm concerned that we need to worry about working hard to grow the community at a steady growth rate, rather than it rescind into something that we really don't want to have. And I would hope that we can work out some compromises on some of these issues that came up today, such that we can come up with a plan that we can meet both objectives. And one of the things that I liked that I heard today was the suggestion about the South Jackson Community Center and the Arts Center, and moving that into collective downtown to satisfy this need that's in the program. I like that approach. So there's some things that I like, and some things that I think we can compromise on and come up with a good plan, but I think that we need to all work together on it and see that we can compromise and realize that everybody's not going to get what they want. Thank you.
That's all from the Planning Commission. Okay, let's turn to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And I'd like to give everyone an opportunity to comment on the things that we have heard tonight, things that we've heard over the last few weeks in our public hearings that we've had. I'll start down at the far end, Alderman, Wilson, any comments?
Yes, thank you. I think that we have, obviously, there's been a concerted effort with the Walker Collaborative and the Planning Commission, everybody has done a really great job, you know, starting this plan. Obviously, there's a lot of questions and concerns about it. I would like to see the attorney general opinion of what type of plan it is, because it seems like that's a pretty important component of, you know, can we modify it? And things like that are pretty important to know, I think, before the implementation or if we were to pass the plan, that would be important to, I think, piece to have in advance. Kind of touching on, you know, the meetings, the, of when the Planning Commission meetings are held, you know, they are at 4:30, that a lot of people do have trouble making it to a meeting that's at 4:30, and there isn't a whole lot of notice to the public, you know, if there is something that's going to be on the agenda, I get this a lot, is why I'm bringing this up. People asking, that there's not a whole lot of notice in advance, so they feel like that it's, if they found out on a Friday night or Saturday, whenever they read it in the paper, that it's tough for them to get off work to be there at 4:30, it's kind of early. I don't know if there's ever any way that we can kind of relook at when we have those meetings, or how we can make that, give maybe a little more heads up when the agenda's in advance, maybe a few days early. That might help with participation, you know, and notification to the public. I would, you know, I would like to see also the, some of the subdivision regulations to be reviewed, might help alleviate some of the worries, and also some of the architectural design requirements, I think, should be put in place before we, maybe in advance, we can maybe look at those. And also kind of touching on the AEDC, Mr. Comer brought up a good point. You know, AEDC is one of the largest employers, and then I think maybe the hospital, TE connectivity. And, you know, if we build, if we start down this road of building like some big PUDs, if that's the route we're going, I don't know that that's the route we're going, I'm just kind of speaking in hypothetical, that... It was my understanding that some of the, you know, that the common spaces and things of that nature might have to be maintained by the city, and I worry that if we lose, say that we lose AEDC, that that might be a big deal, that we don't have the tax base to support some of those things to be maintained. So I just hope that that's looked at, I'm sure that those are things that you all discussed. I would request, and I'd like to see, I don't know how that we would do this, but I really would appreciate, you know, a little more dialogue, I think it would help between the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Planning Commission, just so we can kind of all be on the same page about, you know, all of the plan and things of that nature, so that we can, when people have questions, that we are all kind of up to speed on what's transpiring. Because I really, I haven't heard, I know that I'm new, I've only had two bomba, even meetings under my belt, but I haven't heard anything really from the Planning Commission, even in preparation from this meeting. So it might help for us to kind of feel like that we're on the same team, would be my only suggestion, too. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
Probably in danger of everybody being in bed already by now, but I will have to say that I think I've been reading the Tullahoma News for a long time, and I've never seen one of their surveys where it was 100%. And when they asked, what did people think about the Think Tullahoma 2040 Plan, it was 100% no, as currently written. I've never seen that before. So I think that tells us that there are changes that need to be made. Definitely changes that need to be made to it. I think one of the most important things, and I think several people spoke to that tonight, were, is the fiscal impact study. I think that's really important going forward, and I realize it would be an extra expense to have somebody do that, but when you're making any kind of plan, whether it's for yourself at home or for your business, you always need to look at how much it's going to cost, how much is this plan going to cost? Only, you're just asking for disaster if you don't do that, it's, you know, you may save $300 a month by not buying insurance, but when your house burns down, it's sure a good thing to have. So I think that would be an important thing for us to look at, maybe at least get some pricing on what it would cost to do. And then the other thing, I just kind of think what we're hearing and what I've heard from a lot of people, as they've been talking to me, when I see people that I know, I think the answer's out there, what they kind of want to see about Tullahoma in the future. They want the town that they grew up in, the town that they moved to, and the town that they chose to stay in. So I think if we look at that as a guide to plan our growth for the future, it would be very helpful, and I think that's what most people want to see.
Okay, can you guys hear me? The first thing that I would like to say is, where's the Walker Collaborative? They left. I could say so much about that right there, but this meeting has not been concluded. And if this board had questions of that organization, they should be here until the conclusion of the meeting for the money that we've paid them, number one. Number two, one of the first things that I saw during the presentation tonight was about our current market of people seeking homes. And the market analysis was, you know, people who were, it was basically a transient population or an elderly population, or people who are retirees, or this or that. I didn't see those seeking to better their careers or whatever, but that's what they perceive as our market. The problem with a plan like this, if it's a 2040 comp plan and we're looking to the future, the market shouldn't be displayed as what it currently is. It should be displayed as what we want to attract through targeted marketing. And what we build and what we create here will be what we attract. And I would like to point out that while I believe that in the progressive urbanization that I mentioned earlier would be a compliment for high-density cities, I don't think that that is a compliment for what we're trying to create here, what we're trying to keep here, and the charm that we currently have here in Tallahoma. I find it abhorrent that our arts was not included in these conversations. I find it completely unbelievable that the Walker Collaborative has already left tonight. And I also believe that the comment about builders and that, you know, maybe if there's a lack of, you know, we talked about the Coffee County Industrial Board. Well, so that is one of the things that we need to look at, is what is our workforce lacking here? Well, maybe we should be asking the high school to partner and create a builders CTE class, because I know that we have developers in this town. I come from a family of them, you know, they're all old and retired now, and we don't have currently any projects, you know, really, but we know people who do. And, you know, I think you can create and tap into the market that you want to. But this plan doesn't emblemize what Tallahoma is, or what I'm feeling from the citizens that Tallahoma wants to be, and I believe it is faulty at its roots, and I would not support it in any form or fashion as it currently stands. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Berry.
Can you hear me? I'll use a lot less colorful adjectives. I think, I'll read my notes here. A couple of things, I'm not an Attorney General, but I think when you look through the three different types of plans that are in TCA, you can kind of use the process elimination on some of those, like the comprehensive part where it talks about the county being involved and all the municipalities in the region. You can eliminate that one as being what we're trying to do here, and that's the one that says you can't change in three years. And so, I think that we can immediately say, you know, this is just Tallahoma. But I look forward to the Attorney General's clarification on that. I'll, I will touch on, and this isn't going to be chiding, but it is going to let you know, the agendas. If you are on Facebook and you're in one of the groups and you're commenting and you're doing these different things, you need to subscribe to the City of Tallahoma's Facebook page. If you're not subscribed and you're on Facebook, we can't force you to subscribe, but that's an area where you're going to get information on these events. You can also go to tallahometn.gov, and a lot of times you're going to get your agenda packets, there's a notify me feature on that website. And a lot of times you're going to get that notification of the agenda before I do. Sometimes, well, because I normally don't check my email until, but you're going to get an email on Wednesday before the board meeting about the exact same time that I'm going to get it, with that agenda on there. So, don't wait till Sunday. There's a tool available for you to put your email address in and subscribe to all these different notifications on there. The newspaper is one, but don't wait till Sunday. Subscribe to that feature. Planning Commission comes out now on Wednesday, I believe, as well. So, there is time in there, but, and you can always, I don't want to inundate Mary with phone calls, but you can always call the Planning Commission and say, "Hey, what's up?". But the resources are available. We're not going to go knock on 20, well, there's only 12,000 doors in Tallahoma every time there's something happening. You've got to take advantage of the tools that are available out there. I'm a Tallahoma resident. I also happen to be an Alderman. But I'm a 30-year resident of the City of Tallahoma. I won't say, I try to refrain from saying, "This is what the citizens want, this is what the city wants, this is what everybody wants", because I don't think that's a logical statement to me, right? Because I don't know what all 20,000 people here in Tallahoma want. And when I do hear comments and people saying, "We don't want residences above commercial", I do. I would live there. We don't want townhomes. I would buy a townhome. I've got a yard right now that I don't use, that's got to be cut and maintained. So, when I hear people say that we don't want these things, well, some of us do, and you may not, and I respect that. And the people who do want the opposite of you need to respect that you want that too as well. And so, my opinion is no greater than yours, and your opinion is no greater than mine, and anybody else who's in this room, all of our opinions combined are what makes up Tallahoma. I want to keep that small-town feel. I lived in San Antonio for about five and a half years. And when you hear me describe San Antonio, it's seventh-largest city in the United States, and it's also 20 something, I mean, it's huge. It's one of the largest land-area cities. But I will still describe San Antonio as a small town, having the small-town feel. I could work, and I shopped, and I could walk to all those places, and I loved that. I would love to be able to do that here. But small-town feel isn't just how houses are arranged and how working is arranged. Small-town feel is also a way of life, and a way we talk to each other. It's stopping and food lying and knowing the people that are passing by you. That's small town, and I think that through some of this, we're looking at growth and development as losing that small-town feel, but I think that the way that we're approaching some of these things is where we're losing the small-town feel. A lot of our new Aldermen, you've probably figured this out, and I still feel this way, being an Alderman is like drinking from a fire hose. I mean, there's just so much thrown at you at all times. We're dealing with a comprehensive plan. I've heard concerns about sidewalks, I've heard concerns about stormwater and other infrastructure pieces. We're working on all those pieces as well. We have a sidewalk plan, since Jerry was on the board, and Robin, and I, and even some with Jenna, we've invested close to $2 million in sidewalk infrastructure, and there is a plan. There is, there is a plan for that. So, you may not see it in that comprehensive plan, but reach out to the city, and we can get you that plan. In the, we recently had funded, I think that may be on hold right now, funding for stormwater infrastructure to do an engineering plan that, so we can look at these things. And that was close to, or maybe over $2 million. And so, there's a lot of things happening at one time, and I know that it's difficult to get all that information, but reach out to somebody, and somebody can get you those mobility plans, somebody can get you the transport. We've got transportation studies that talk about our major thoroughways, and where we need lights, and where we may need to widen, and some of these issues there. So, those plans do exist. We are thinking about infrastructure, we are thinking about stormwater, we are currently working on those things all at once. I am a huge supporter of South Jackson, and I feel that we didn't overlook it, because part of the funding that we did was $600,000, $700,000 worth of investments into South Jackson. And we've had some other investments. Can we do more? Absolutely, and I'm a, believe that we should sink as much money as we can afford into South Jackson. What I can tell you is, if somebody wanted to, private investor wanted to go, well, I can probably guarantee you that nobody up here would vote for, not guarantee, I would not vote for the city to buy Trader's Bank and put an amphitheater out there. That is a crazy idea, and I don't think anybody on this board would support that. But if a private investor came and said, "Hey, I'm going to buy Trader's Bank, and I'm going to put an amphitheater there", more power to you, that's your money, I'm not going to stop you. Can we support it? I don't know. It's not my money, I don't care. If they want to do it, then let them do it. But what I, I'm not going to walk, it's because I'm big, I'm overweight, I'm not going to, there's about a week and a half out of every year where the weather is okay for me to walk from downtown to South Jackson. That, I mean, it's either too hot, or it's too cold, or it's raining outside. And so, I think that just saying, everybody can just walk down there, it's just an easy thing to do. I don't know that that's true. I think that we can sustain multiple things at one time, and I think restricting to one area and saying that we don't have the population to support all of these different things, I think that that may be a little short-sighted. And what we're looking at is getting the population, not huge growth. I'm from here, I don't want to live in a Murphy's Borough either. If I wanted to, I'd move to Murphy's Borough. But I do want to see mixed development. I do support the TNN, maybe not the way that it's written right now, but we can go through and we can look at those things, and we can define some of those things. I don't support just putting architectural design restrictions in standard Euclidean zones. I think that it's okay to say, "You have to do this on your property", until it's us telling you what you've got to do on your property. When that page, when the page flips there, your opinion on that's going to be a little bit different. I got more, but we'll have plenty of time to talk about this, I think.
Mayor Protem Mathis.
Is this on at all? There you go. What I have found tonight, and I will agree with Mr. Glick, in that if you look in the newspapers and around, or you talk to people, everyone you talk to, that's what they want. They do not want this plan. And so, if we're here to try to appease our society, try to appease our citizens, then we don't have a choice but to say, "All right, this is not something we need." The young man up here tonight, who was giving his take on all of the comments that were made, he was always stating something that was positive for the plan. Not one time did I hear him say anything negative about that plan, so it's all, in other words, it was all one-sided. And I do not see that Tallahoma needs that right now, but I wouldn't be for it, so that's where I stand right this time.
Well, tonight, we've listened a lot. And the last thing on the agenda tonight is to, we've been asked to, by staff, to propose to staff recommendations. And for the Board of Mayor and Alderman, I'd like to suggest this, and I will make this in the form of a motion, that we take these 148 pages, I've read every one of them, by the way, plus the two additional pages I got today. I would propose that we refer this comprehensive plan back to the Planning Commission, who has the authority and responsibility for developing a comprehensive plan. For them to synthesize the comments that we've received, and I believe that if you narrow them down to, take 90% of the comments we've heard, you could put them into one of four categories, so they're, you can be, they can be grouped. But at this time, I would entertain a motion to refer this back to the Planning Commission for incorporation of the comments that we've heard over the last, over the last month, all of our planning, all of our comp plans, public hearings that we've had. So, I'd entertain that motion at this time.
I'll second with an amendment, if possible.
What's your amendment, Alderman Berry?
That the, because I think just sending it back to the Planning Commission on its own, without recommendations from the board, kind of, and some input from us, could land that plan right back in the position that we're in. So, I would recommend, I would amend to say we do that, but the board also have a special called meeting where this is the only thing that we do, and we each come to that meeting with specific amendments or specific things that we would like to see changed, and we can formalize that and give that to the Planning Commission, so that the Planning Commission can have those concerns addressed as they're going through before it comes back to us for another time. So, I guess my amendment would be that we have a special-called session, and each board, maybe two weeks out or three weeks out, to give each of us enough time to digest everything that we've heard here today, and come with a list of, this is specific, what I'd like to change.
I'll accept that amendment. We have the motion to send it back to the Planning Commission after we have had recommendations from the board through a special call meeting.
I would just like to say that I hope that our Board of Mayor and Aldermen are able to approve a plan. From what I'm hearing tonight, it sounds as though there may be enough people just to vote it down completely. I would find that extremely disruptive to the entire community for a lot of reasons. We do have a comprehensive plan that we're working under, and I know everybody at this stage knows that, that we are working under the 2012 plan. It is a copy-pasted document that was just put together from MTAAS, and it is, it is a major reason why we are in the shape we're in right now. It wasn't in any way tied to Tallahoma, it wasn't in any way looking at who we are as a, as a community, and I think we had a group come in here that did their very best to do that. And it is going to be a plan that is not going to appease everyone. However, I think the idea of voting no would be extremely disruptive. So, I will, I will also support what you had to say there, Mayor, but I hope that the rest of our board will find a plan that will work for them.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion with an amendment. I'll call for the vote. I'll start with my vote, if I may. I vote aye.
The vote is to postpone. Tell me what we're voting on again.
To have a special call meeting where we each come with a specific list of things that we would like to see changed.
So, another special call meeting.
So that before it goes there, we have everything out that we want to get changed, so that when it comes back to us...
So, this is just be for the board, not for the board and Planning Commission?
Just the board. And we'll send them our...
Okay. I vote yes.
Your vote again?
Yes.
Glick?
Alderman Glick, your vote was yes, your vote was aye.
There's a unanimous vote from the Board of Mayor and Alderman to refer this back to the Planning Commission, to accept, to take all the comments that we've received tonight, plus comments from the board after a special call meeting, refer it back to the Planning Commission. That is the directions to staff. Closing remarks from Planning Director and the City Administrator.
Um, Planning Director, I'll make this brief. I'm happy to see that you're considering amending the plan based on a public comment that we've received, and I am here to help in any way possible. Thank you.
City Administrator, your comments?
I do not have much to add. What I heard tonight was that...
City Administrator, your comments?
I do not have much to add. What I heard tonight was that you would like at least two weeks' notice before we hold that special-call meeting, and then you will discuss specific items that you want to change in the plan, and we'll send those recommendations on to the Planning Commission. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any comments from the Planning Commission Chair?
Four quarters. So, hey, we have to be able to kind of, hey, we got to get a little bit better up front, and we've got to really value the possession of each ball that we have and each rep that we get right now.
Coach, you do a little rotating quarterbacks. You bring Mason in occasionally for a play. What's the thinking there?
The thinking there is we need to get some different looks and some different schemes. If you'll notice, our offense isn't exactly what it's always been.